...really identify what the priorities were in their communities and to identify how we can leverage this project to create the most good in the surrounding communities.
More than 25 members of the committee and representatives of more than 40 organizations gathered at City Hall to pledge their support.
This stadium and event center could not come at a better time for our city. It will put thousands of people to work, in direct jobs, and when it is complete, it will provide the city with much-needed, net-new tax revenue for basic city services.
Supporters say that as developers of various mega-projects, AEG has a track record of creating far-reaching programs to benefit the local community, which includes open space for kids to play.
The program will provide over $1.3 million in funds for the development of parks within the targeted area.
Opponents say Farmer's Field will create traffic congestion around the area, but AEG said it is researching solutions to address the issue. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week. AEG spent a year researching and developing the Community Benefits Program with input from a wide range of community groups, labor unions, officials, residents, and others. Well, you ain't seen nothing yet, that's what the folks behind San Pedro's latest tourist attraction, the USS Iowa, are saying as they prepare to unveil even more awe-inspiring tours aboard the floating museum. Anna Marcos gives us a glimpse of just what's in store for visitors.
If you're looking for some World War II thrills, the USS Iowa is packing plenty, and it's about to pack some more. In the two months since it opened, the ship museum has oohed and awed 75,000 visitors with its World War II mystique.
This is where President Roosevelt spent a majority of his time while he traveled on the North Atlantic, going to the Tehran Conference to meet with Chiang Ie-shek, Churchill, and also Stalin. So if these bulkheads, as we call them, the "stodder walls" could speak, surely there would be many, many interesting stories.
But now get ready for new high-tech tours that will be opening to the public in the next couple of years. There will be a gun tour, a missile tour, and a battle tour, which will put visitors right in the heat of battle.
Six tours will be planned. They all cost about $1 million each, so they will be high-tech. For example, if you go into the gun turrets, you're actually going to see a 3D movie through the porthole that exists there of the guys loading those guns, and when they fire, you're going to feel vibration plates, and you're going to hear those sights and sounds. Our plan is, is if you were in that space, we're going to bring it back to life for them.
You are looking at areas of the ship that have yet to be seen by visitors. Soon, the public will be able to visit the topmost levels of the ship, as well as places deep inside it. City leaders hope the expected added influx of visitors helps fill up city coffers.
What does that mean? 75,000 guests who come to San Pedro, the Harbor area, to spend their dollars, not only on the ship, but also to visit our other attractions here in the downtown San Pedro and Harbor area region.
Only seven other battleships like this still exist, one in Hawaii, six on the East Coast. The USS Iowa, now at berth 87, is the only one to make the West Coast its home. It may have retired its battle guns, but its gangway is down, and it's open for business. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
And for more information on admission to the USS Iowa, visit www.pacificbattleship.com. Part of turning the city from a park-poor to a park-rich city is the ability to find land to build the parks. And as Gil Reyes tells us, city leaders didn't need to look far. In fact, they looked as far as their cars took them, to several parking spaces downtown and beyond.
People most likely walk by this metered parking spot without thinking twice about it, but soon, it'll look like this: a cozy little rest area with drought-resistant plants and public seating.
By taking the little space of a park, a parking space, 6x20, and creating a small plaza, you're not just expanding the sidewalk, you're really creating a new center for the neighborhood.
City leaders called them "parklets," basically miniature parks. Two are coming to downtown-area sidewalks along the 600 block of Spring Street. Next to cafes, restaurants, and shops, a place to unwind and chit-chat with the hustle and bustle of downtown as the scenery.
As we look forward to the future, when we talk about building neighborhoods, when we talk about making sure that people know one another, this is certainly going to help do that.
Councilmembers Jose Wezar and Jan Perry lobbied to have them built in Los Angeles following a successful pilot program in San Francisco. Another parklet will be built in El Surino along Huntington Drive, also York Boulevard in Highland Park. The community of Highland Park hosts a second Saturday art fair every month.
I am so looking forward to having this parklet right there. The streets are jumping. We have a cycling crowd that comes in, anywhere from 60 to 200 cyclists. The bike corral is filled. It's just very exciting stuff.
No reservations needed, and your tables will be open when LA's first four parklets are completed in about three months. In downtown LA, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Construction costs for each parklet run between $20,000 and $25,000. They're paid for by a grant from the Gilbert Foundation. Anticipate more parklets throughout Los Angeles if this pilot program is successful. And from parklets to a more traditional park project near La Brea and Melrose, a murder four years ago helped set the wheels in motion, transforming a troubled park there into a place families would want to take their children.
It was truly a community event. The reopening of the new and improved Poinsettia Rec Center brought out families to celebrate this local park. A pet adoption fair, a blood drive, and classic LAPD cruisers on display helped make this festive occasion even more festive.
You've all worked very hard, care very deeply about your city and your community, and today, we celebrate the fruits of all of your labors.
But it took the tragedy four years ago near the park to spark the effort that eventually transformed the park.
An elderly man was stabbed to death on his evening walk. It was shocking, and that brought the community together. And one of the things that we realized was that this park was a blighted park, that there were a lot of problems in this park.
From a problem park to a treasured neighborhood resource, Poinsettia Recreation Center at 7341 Willoughby Avenue is today a point of pride. Amenities include a new walking jogging path, new outdoor basketball and handball courts, upgrades to the baseball fields, a new children's play area, and outdoor fitness equipment.
The equipment uses your own body weight, so there's no, you're really very difficult to strain yourself. It's just really, really good and innovative.
And the family behind one of LA's most well-known restaurants helped turn the celebration into a picnic.
We are giving away free hot dogs because Pink's has been part of the Poinsettia Park community for 73 years.
My parents used to bring us here. They used to have a little pool here and swim in the pool, and we've always been active in the Poinsettia area because we did live in the area for many years, and we still do.
And perhaps many years from now, this day in this park will be remembered just as fondly by a whole new generation who calls this neighborhood home.
Funding for the new park improvements came from Quimby Feeds and Proposition K. Free Wi-Fi at LAX and solar power, a hot trend here in the city, also honoring a local volunteerism organization. These stories and more in City Beat. Los Angeles International Airport has become the largest airport in the U.S. to offer free Wi-Fi service to passengers. Passengers may use Wi-Fi basic services for free for sessions up to 45 minutes, or opt to pay for premium and uninterrupted Wi-Fi service for a 24-hour period. The Wi-Fi service is being provided by Advanced Wireless Group. Mayor Antonio Viegas said in a statement that free Wi-Fi at LAX furthers the city's initiative to provide free or low-cost internet services throughout the city. Solar power on rooftops in Los Angeles has nearly quadrupled over the past two years thanks to the participation of LA residents and businesses. The LA Department of Water and Power had put its popular solar power incentives program on hold for five months to catch up on a backlog, but a year after it reinstated the program, the utility says participation has increased dramatically over prior years. The LADWP estimates that at this rate of demand, the city will exceed 100 megawatts of net-metered solar capacity by this fall. The LA City Council has approved a proposal by Councilmember Richard Alarcone to provide funding for Hanson Dam Weekend Patrols. The goal of the 10 weekend patrols which are considered overtime pay is to help keep Northeast Valley safe during summer parties. The money, nearly $45,000, will come from community redevelopment funding earmarked for the councilman's district. Police will be on the lookout for loud parties, illegal fireworks, and other behavior that can encroach on family-friendly activities at the recreation area. Sharefest Community Development, founded in 2006, is a nonprofit organization that mentors youths and fosters volunteerism through service projects. Sharefest first started as a community workday, but transformed into something much more after its founder realized a greater need.
We started to make a lot of connections and met some great people. We also saw our community facing a history of broken families, drugs, violence, and a hurting education system.
This short video on Sharefest was shown in council chambers recently when the organization was honored by Councilmember Joe Buscagino. Since its inception, the organization has mobilized over 35,000 volunteers to complete over $6.5 million worth of projects for cities and schools in Los Angeles County. Students at Campbell Hall were really excited to start their first day of school, all thanks to a brand-new arts and education facility. Yana Kay has more. Campbell Hall student Sean Hollahan is practicing playing the steel drums in this new music room. He says the new room is a big improvement from the old one.
And now we have as much space as we need, and everything here is made for our purposes.
This new music room was built and designed to maximize space and improve sound quality, from special drapes to cork floors.
It's just inspiring to be in this space and to be a part of something that's just amazing. You know, we, all of the students and myself, were very fortunate. We feel very lucky to be here.
The music room is just one part of the brand-new Arts and Education Building, featuring 40,000 square feet of LEED-certified classroom space and underground parking.
It also put us on the map with Studio City. So this was a community campaign. We have frontage right on Laurel Canyon right now, and we will be bringing the community into the school for all kinds of events as well.
Campbell Hall students, faculty, and various city officials gathered in Studio City for a ribbon-cutting dedication ceremony officially opening the new building.
It's a place where kids can really learn and grow.
The building features drama, photography, video production, art classes, and two dance studios.
I'm standing in the new music studio lab, and let me tell you, this looks more like a professional recording studio than in a high school classroom. Now take a look at this. The kids have brand-new Apple computers where they'll get to learn how to record, edit, all types of audio.
I love it. It's really beautiful, and it's new, and clean, and it just looks really good, and there's a lot of new things that we didn't have before.
New and shiny things that officials hope will help guide these students to a bright future. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week. The Studio City School took four years to build. For many LA residents, back-to-school time often means a trip to the shopping mall, but for struggling families, back-to-school can be an especially trying time financially. As Anna Marcos tells us, two events helped to make this time of year a carefree one for parents and kids.
People lined up for hours outside the Los Angeles Mission as the homeless shelter celebrated its yearly back-to-school block party, street fair, and backpack giveaway.
That's very nice of them, giving us things, and then paying for it and us enjoying it.
Up for grabs, 1,000 backpacks, complete with school supplies, 1,000 pairs of shoes, and more than 3,000 meals.
I'm good. I just got my five kids, my wife, and just taking care of my kids day by day, every day.
I bring my granddaughter for a present.
I'm just hungry.
Looking at the lines, it's easy to see the statistics come to life. According to the 2012 Kids Count data book by the Annie E. Casey Foundation, one in four children in LA live in poverty, one in eight live in extreme poverty, and for about 1,000 homeless LA children, Skid Row is home.
To them, going back to school doesn't mean that they automatically get their shoes. Doesn't mean they automatically get that new clothes. Doesn't mean they automatically get those school supplies. So this is a wonderful thing for our young people, to show them that we care.
One time, we had like about, I don't know, 2,000 people. Now we have like about 10,000 people.
Out in Cypress Park, another boost for families sending their kids off to school. The Cypress Park Family Source Center handed out more backpacks. There were also meals and activities.
I think these backpacks just kind of give hope to the kids, you know? Some of these kids, you know, their families are kind of on a downside right now, and I think these backpacks are just kind of a symbol of hope, you know, that these kids can actually have a future. So I think these backpacks are just a step forward for them in their life.
A good meal, a new pair of shoes on their feet, and a backpack on their backs, and these kids are ready for a new year of the ABCs. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The groups and organizations that took part in the two giveaways included the offices of Councilmembers Jose Wezar and Ed Reyes, Skechers Shoes, the Community Development Department, Soul for Souls, and US Bank. In this week's List of Things to Do, Brian Setzer Orchestra at the Bowl, a concert of lullabies, and a martial arts expo. Enjoy the Hollywood Bowl's fireworks finale when the Brian Setzer Orchestra takes the stage on Saturday, September 15th at 8:00 PM. The three-time Grammy winner Brian Setzer is known for taking chances with innovative and daring musical styles, as well as resurrecting rockabilly and swing. The Hollywood Bowl is located at 2301 North Highland Avenue in Hollywood, but you are encouraged to take shuttles to the Bowl. Setzer is also performing at the Bowl that Friday and Sunday. For tickets and information, go to HollywoodBowl.com. And you can help raise money for veterans at Spectrum Athletic Club's Ta-Fit Fitness Health and Martial Arts Expo on Saturday, September 15th, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The expo will feature martial arts demonstrations by leading instructors in the community, complimentary personal training assessments, and the latest in group fitness classes, and much more. The expo will be held at the Spectrum Athletic Club at 22235 Sherman Way in Canoga Park. Call 818-884-5034 for more information. Tony-nominated star of stage and screen Valerie Pettiford of Broadway's Fosse and HBO's Tremé announces the release of a new solo album and a Los Angeles concert date. To celebrate her second solo album, Velvet Sky, a collection of original lullabies to be released in October, Pettiford is performing a rare one-night-only concert on Sunday, September 16th, at the LA Gay and Lesbian Center's Renberg Theater at 7:00 PM. The Renberg Theater is located at 1125 North McCadden Place in Hollywood. For tickets and detailed information, go to lagaycenter.org. There will be storytelling, dancing, and more at the family-friendly event. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. 231 years ago, a small group of mostly Spanish and Indian settlers founded Los Angeles. To mark the anniversary, city leaders hosted a big celebration at the very spot where the city of Los Angeles got its start. Anita Bennett has more.
Happy birthday to you. With music, a giant cake, and a march from the San Gabriel Mission to El Pueblo Monument, Los Angeles leaders marked the city's birthday.
231 years ago, this city was founded by a walk from San Gabriel Mission to this very spot, and from this very spot germinated what is now 485 miles of a great, great city.
In 1781, 44 Spanish settlers founded LA in the area now known as Olvera Street. To mark the anniversary, city leaders invited residents to a public birthday party.
Really happy to celebrate here with diverse people and great music, but the most important thing is that diversity is the strength of this great city.
And a diverse group of people came out for the party, including a famous Mexican telenovela star.
Oh, it's amazing. I think those LA opens their arms to everybody who wants to come here. It doesn't matter where you come from, like he was saying, France, Mexico, whatever, they open your arms. So that's beautiful, and I just can say thank you and happy birthday, LA.
Meantime, another resident said she wanted to show her gratitude to the city's original settlers.
I'm thankful, grateful and thankful. If it wasn't for them, we wouldn't have what we have today.
The celebration ended with a little more music, including a serenade from city leaders. I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. In 1781, just 44 people, the original settlers, lived in LA. Today, according to the latest census figures, the population is just over 3.7 million. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Just a minute, I gotta finish this.
Wait, you're gonna post those pictures of Mary?
Yep. She thinks she's so hot.
But her mom and dad will see them. Her grandmother, her little sister, everyone she knows, it's gonna kill her.
Who cares? Just a couple of pictures. It's no big deal.
No big deal? Don't. This has gotta stop.
Hi, I'm Nina. This is my daughter Miranda, and we live in Silver Lake. We love the cultural diversity of Los Angeles. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Our city, our channel.
... Good morning. Good morning. I wanna welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. It is Wednesday, September 12th. The Los Angeles City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, at 10:00 a.m. Today is a very special day. Today is Latino Heritage Month, our awards ceremony. So why don't, just to make me feel good, the president of the council, let's have a large round of applause for Latino Heritage Month. It is now my pleasure to invite into the council chambers our great mayor and his delegation, Mayor Antonio Villarogosa. I'm gonna ask Mr. Reyes to go to the podium, joined by Mr. Alacón, so we can introduce some of our special guests. Mr. Reyes, Mr. Alacón, the floor is yours.
Council members, it is indeed our pleasure to introduce the Latino Heritage Month opening ceremony themed Celebrando los Sueños, Logros y Legacy Latino, celebrating the Latino dream, achievement, and legacy. For over 20 years, the city of Los Angeles has honored all Latino cultures, musical traditions, and the contributions of Latinos in the United States. I take personal pleasure in this particular day because when I was president of the Chicano City Employees Association back in 1992, I received this memo from Terry McKinnon at Rosenkindle talking about the mission statement for celebrating Latino Hispanic Heritage Month. And so I wanna recognize Terry McKinnon for being one of the dreamers to create this idea. And subsequent to that, of course, worked with council members Hernandez and Alatore to really build it into a cultural month. So with that, it is now with great pleasure and honor that I acknowledge the consul generals that are here with us today from Latino countries. You see the flags in front of you represent all the countries that have a consulate office here in Los Angeles. And I might mention that today, I think, the consulate generals represent a particular significance given the tragedy that occurred in Libya. These are people that we respect, their presence in our community. We respect their opportunity to work with their local constituents. And we agree that our participation in their countries is equally as important. So with that, it is my pleasure with my colleagues to introduce the consul generals, starting with Cristina Vaina de Martinez, consul general of Argentina. Roland Henry York, consul general of Belize. Marco Cuba Marino, consul general of Bolivia. I'd also like to welcome and acknowledge the following consul generals. José Alfredo Graca Lima, consul general of Brazil. Carlos Augusto Seles Gutierrez, consul general of Colombia. Silvia Ugarte, consul general of Costa Rica. Eddie Bedon Orbe, consul general of Ecuador. Welcome to Los Angeles. Now I'd like to invite my colleague, Consul Garcetti, to recognize our next consul generals.
Thank you very much. It gives me a great honor to be here today with all these amazing flags and this amazing heritage. I wanna continue our tremendous consular corps from Latin American countries. Our great friend David Figueroa Ortega, who is the consul general de Mexico. And if you missed him in East L.A., he looked great in our Mexican Independence Day parade. I'd like to also welcome the esteemed Victor Ugo Peña, who is the consul general of Paraguay. And again, we wanna thank all the consul generals for being here with us this morning and participating in this very special Latino Heritage Month opening. Let's give them all a round of applause for their hard work and their efforts. Okay. Do you want it? Okay. So apologies, we have three more from Guatemala. Pablo Cesar García Science. Olympia Bustillo Lijil, who is the consul general de Honduras. And from Nicaragua, José Alberto Acevedo Vogle. De Peru, we have Liliana Sino de Silva, consul general de Peru. So it now gives me great pleasure to get this show started. We have a very special presentation for you this morning. Both the Music Center and Plaza de la Raza, right here in Lincoln Heights, in Council District 1, have come together to produce this opening number. And thank you, Councilmember Reyes, for your help with that. It highlights cultures from South America, Central America, and Mexico. And following that, Plaza de la Raza's Mariachi will play, and then we will hear from the mayor. So let's start the show.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Antonio Villarogosa. As I say, thanks. As I say, thanks. All right. Mister. Okay, let's give him a round of applause. Mister Garcetti, I'd like to take those guys with me everywhere I go. What an entrance, what an entrance. Mister Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mister President. And, you know, some elected officials have hailed to the chief. Our mayor has Zorro. It is great to see. And this isn't just unique to Latino Heritage Month. When he walks into rooms, this music plays all the time. But it is my great privilege to introduce the leader of our city, the first Latino mayor in 150 years, but a bridge builder, a coalition builder, a man who has reminded us that our heritage is a common heritage. He never fails to tell us the story of the pobladores and how they came from everywhere, Latinos that were black, brown, white, and Asian. But a man who has brought all of those pieces together and who represented us so well nationally last week. Somebody who is not great just in here as a city leader, not just as a state leader, but as a global leader. Please welcome the mayor of our city, Antonio Villarogosa.
I'm taking him with me. I want to thank you, Councilmember Garcetti, for that very, very generous introduction. And I want to thank you and the rest of the council. This will be the last series of Heritage Month celebrations that I will be hosting and celebrating with all of you. And I was thinking about the refrain in my speech the other day at the convention when I talked about L.A.'s diversity. You know, when we celebrate days like this and months like this, whether it's Latino Heritage Month, African-American Heritage Month, Native American Heritage Month, when we celebrate API Heritage Month, or the many different celebrations that we have throughout the year, celebrating the ethnic cultures, the kaleidoscope of cultures that make L.A., I think it makes us feel so proud. It makes us realize how much has changed and how much better we are as a city and a nation that we're so embracing of this wonderful diversity. And one of the things that Marielena said to me, one of our honorees, was, you know, there was a day when you'd have a mariachi, but half of them wouldn't be women, and now they are. And so, you know, I love it, I love it. Thank you to Councilman Garcetti and to all of you. I want to thank Plaza de la Raza and the Music Center for that fantastic performance. Let's give him a big hand. And I've been with Plaza de la Raza since, I think, 11th grade, when we started raising the money for Plaza de la Raza back then. And, you know, to see it still be an anchor tenant of culture on the east side in Lincoln Heights, in your district, Mister Reyes, is a real pleasure. To everyone, it's a great pleasure to stand here today to celebrate the opening of 2012 Latino Heritage Month. But I also stand here with a bit of regret because, as I said, this is the last Latino Heritage Month I will celebrate as mayor. And this year is the last cycle of Heritage Month celebrations that I will have the honor of presiding. And over the last eight years, I think we've all felt this sense of pride with the opening of each and every Heritage Month. And over the last eight years, these Heritage Months have showcased the rainbow of cultural riches that we enjoyed together as Angelenos. And each and every year, these Heritage Month celebrations have brought to life the profound truth about this great city. Diversity really is our strength. It's not just a phrase. It's what makes us so strong. It's what sets us apart. There are many diverse cities in the United States of America, but there's none that I know of that, from its very beginning, and I will do it again, 44 new Spain settlers, 26 of them tracing their heritage to Africa. There were mixed Latino, Indian, mulatto, mixed Indian, European. There was even one Filipino who dropped off before he got here, but was part of the original. And when you think about it, it's really what makes us so different. 140 countries, 220 languages, 37 nationalities that have the largest population here outside of the country of origin. This is the city where the world comes together. And so diversity and the celebration of that diversity is in our soul. It's in our DNA. And I want to thank and acknowledge the many people who have made all of the Heritage Months so successful and so special. Con todo mi corazón, muchas gracias. And I want to assure that everyone that we have no intention of resting on our laurels. This year, we're going to go out with a bang. We're going to let the world know that for the people from all four corners of the world, L.A. really is the city of America's hope and promise. And I know whoever the next person is to have this job, and he may be standing right next to me. Whoever that person is, they're going to want to make these celebrations even bigger and better. And that is without question what we celebrate as well. And of course, I want to acknowledge the council generals who are here from Latin America and Mexico. And, you know, it's great to have, well, Mexico is part of Latin America. I was going to say, South America and Central America and Mexico, of course, from Latin America. It's great to have you here. And as we pay tribute to the generations of Latinos who have enriched our city's history and are key to its future success, I'd like to take a moment and memorialize Lupe Ontebados, a trailblazing Latina who made an indelible imprint on our city. She had a zest for life and for everything she did, whether it was the stage, the television screen, or the movie screen. Lupe lit it up. She moved so many people so deeply with her amazing artistry, with her generosity, and with her passionate advocacy on behalf of women, the hearing impaired, the arts, and our Latino community. And as a founding member of the Downtown Latino Theater Company, her artistic contributions will continue to enrich the lives of Angelenos for decades to come. She will be sorely missed. And today, we come together to recognize the heritage at the heart of this city's past, present, and future. The story of this community is the story of our city, the story of the city of angels. It's the story of our country, nuestra historia. Our community is a patchwork of many groups. We trace our origins back to different nations and different continents. We're a collection of newcomers, those with roots that stretch deep and long into the city's soil. Our story is about working together. We've crossed lines of class, color, and citizenship to help this city thrive and this country deliver on the promise of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. When we look to the future, I want us to dream big dreams. And I want us to continue to do what we've always done, turn those dreams into reality with hard work, faith, and perseverance. It is now my distinct pleasure to honor three people who are shining examples of our community, to honor them with the Spirit of Los Angeles Award, the Dream of Los Angeles Award, and the Hope of Los Angeles Award. And the next group of people, who I think best represent the spirit of this city, are the Dreamers. And I'd like the Dreamers to please come on up. With us are a courageous, a courageous group of young people from three organizations, Wise Up, the California Dream Network, the Dream Team, and the Dream Resource Center. That's four. My fellow Angelenos, if you ever wondered what heroes look like, look behind me, look, look right here. These are today's heroes. Like so many Dreamers, these young people have lived in fierce shadow. They've known the insecurity that comes from being undocumented. And although they've had it tough, they have never, ever given up. You know, when I think about the things that are said about young people like this, when I hear the scapegoating, the demonizing, the attempts to make them invisible, take a look at them, each and every one of them. And they represent tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands in this city, in this area. They're just like you and me. They have dreams. They want to reach for the stars. They want to go to college. They want to get a good job. They want to have a family. They want to buy a home. They know no other country but this one. Some of them can speak two languages, some of them only barely. They live and bleed this country just like the rest of us. They've stared hardship in the face and said, "You will not defeat me." We will not be defeated. They have a fierce determination that burns inside of them. Their hearts are overflowing with passion to give back. I love to tell the story of Claudia and Bupendra. Claudia and Bupendra are two Dreamers who have fought to go to school and make it and understood that when they got an education, they had to give back. They had to open up the door for others. And there are young people here who want to do the same thing. They want to contribute mightily to our country. And since 2009, Chirlis Wise Up has helped undocumented high school students to address the problems facing immigrant youth. Through tireless activism and passionate persistence, Wise Up worked to lobby our state legislature for the passage of the California Dream Act. And thanks to their efforts, AB 540 undocumented students now have the opportunity to pay in-state tuition at any California college or university. But they didn't stop there, yet. Their efforts evolved into the Dream Team Los Angeles, a group dedicated to empowering undocumented youth and giving them the tools and the training to change their lives and change the country. Dream Team L.A. is nurturing young leaders who will continue the push for sensible and humane immigration reform. And much like the hope and promise of the young people they serve, the ambitions of this Dream Team were too big to be bound by our city borders. So Dream Team L.A. expanded into an entire network. The Dream Network mobilizes young people across the Golden State, regardless of political affiliation, ethnicity, citizenship status, sexual orientation. The Dream Network works to advocate for equal access to education, immigration reform, and social justice. And over the last 10 years, the California Dream Team has spread across 38 college/university campuses, trained over 2,000 student leaders, and impacted countless lives. And the Dream Resource Center, which is going to be a hub for immigrant youth movement here in L.A. and nationwide. By leading community education efforts on issues affecting undocumented youth and access to higher education, you have inspired a generation to fight for what they believe in, for your passion, for your commitment to justice, for your dedication to helping other young people, for your courageous refusal to be deterred by any obstacle. I award you all the Spirit of Los Angeles Award. Wise Up. California Dream Network. Dream Resource Center. Dream Team L.A. Yes.
Thank you. My name is Sofia Campos. I am undocumented. I came here from Nemo, Peru, when I was six years old. And on behalf of the Dream Resource Center, we are very honored and grateful for this award. We do work to support the undocumented immigrant youth going on to graduate school. We address issues of mental health in our community. And we published the first book called Undocumented Yet Unafraid about our national immigrant youth movement, written by undocumented immigrant youth. Dreamers are the ones who led the victory for deferred action. And we will continue to organize for the passage of the Dream Act and for larger immigration reform. I would like to acknowledge our LGBTQ brothers and sisters and the women of our immigrant youth movement who have led our dream movement time and time again and will continue to do so. And as an undocumented member of this community, I urge you to help us support the passage of the Trust Act, AB 1081, which will help keep our entire immigrant community in California safe and secure for years to come. Thank you very much for this award.
Hello, thank you so much. My name is Adrian Figueroa, and I just want to say that I've had my fair share of, how do you say it? I've had my fair share of hardships. But this summer, I learned that there's people out there who have had it worse than I have and still continue to go on. In the Wise Up organization that's been around for more than 10 years, I truly learned about the immigrant rights and battles that have been going on for many years now. And it amazes me that we know the struggles we may face in coming here, but we do it for the better future of not only us, but our future children and grandchildren. And that's why we have to support the Trust Act. Also, Wise Up has taught me not just about my background, but they've taught me about college, how to get there and how to succeed in it. So I truly just want to thank Wise Up and Chirlis, two great organizations that have really opened my eyes. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Gustino Mora. I came to the U.S. when I was 11 years old. And on behalf of the California Dream Network, I want to thank the city of Los Angeles for this award. The California Dream Network has been established for more than 10 years, and it continues to advocate for immigrant rights. And we have expanded to over 60 campuses across the state. And, you know, we know that the Deferred Action Policy is just one step forward. And we have so many parents, so many people in this community who are undocumented and are being targeted by the Secure Communities Program. And for that reason, we want to protect those heroes because our parents, those members in our communities, they're our heroes, and we want to protect them. And we know that the Trust Act can be the second step towards achieving something bigger, such as a comprehensive immigration reform. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mercedes Montano, and I came at the age of seven years old from Mexico. And I would like to thank, well, the city of Los Angeles for this award on behalf of Dream Team Los Angeles. And Dream Team Los Angeles was created in 2009. And since then, we have fought for comprehensive immigration reform, for Dream Team, for the Dream Act, and also our recent victory of deferred action that has caused us a lot of struggles, civil disobedience from some of our members that have put their lives at risk at the end of last year. But we continue to fight for all immigrant rights in the U.S. And I want to reiterate the importance of passing the Trust Act because we want to continue to fight for all, for not only students, but our parents, our cousins, all of our immigrant community. We want to keep this struggle until we get a just comprehensive immigration reform. So thank you very much on behalf of Dream Team Los Angeles.
I want you all to know, and I know that the council, I believe the council opined in support of the Trust Act. He incluido en ese tema. He dicho una y otra vez que California necesita un camino diferente, que necesitamos pasar el Acto de la Juventud, que necesitamos este Acto de Trust, que necesitamos una reforma de la inmigración comprensiva. Y sabes, cuando desbloqueas el talento que hay aquí, cuando abres la ciudad y el país a este talento, los economistas conservadores han dicho que es una infusión de 1.5 billones de dólares en la economía de Estados Unidos. Si traemos a estas personas de fuera del oscuro y hacia la luz, van a pagar en tu sistema de Seguridad Social, van a asegurarse de que el país esté vibrante para el futuro. No podríamos ser más orgullosos de todos ustedes. Gracias. Ahora, el premio del espíritu de Los Ángeles es de alguien que es muy familiar para casi todos ustedes, creo, Mia Lehrer. Como las verduras rojas vibrantes de nuestra planta nativa, la toyan, Mia Lehrer trae belleza brillante a nuestra ciudad con sus obras maestras de diseño y arquitectura de paisaje. Su trabajo gracioso ha mejorado desarrollos importantes como en el Parque de Hollywood y el waterfront de San Pedro. Con proyectos innovadores como el parque Vista Hermosa, que amo, el camino de pista de la Corte de la Ley Silvera, ha creado un oasis de descanso y rejuvenación para los Angelenos que buscan espacio abierto y verde. Sus proyectos de renovación en la estación Union de Downtown, el Hotel Roosevelt de Hollywood y el Corte Santí han sido mejorados con el espíritu y estilo signatureales de su visión arquitectural. Su pasión por el diseño bueno solo se encaja en su dedicación a la comunidad. Y con cada nuevo proyecto, Mia Lehrer se dedica a escuchar a los interesados y asegurar que sus pensamientos y ideas energizan y enriquecen cada proyecto. Numerousas organizaciones y comisiones están afortunadas de tenerla como miembro. Sirve en las ciudades de L.A., en el panel de asesoría de diseño del alcalde, en la comisión de directores de la Fundación de Arquitectura de Paisaje, en el Foro Urbano Latino, en la Asociación Nacional de Arquitectura, en el Comité de Revisión de Diseño de Hollywood, y en el Consejo de Revisión de Diseño de la Magazine Harvard. Una ambientalista de corazón, Lehrer, esfuma todas sus proyectos con el profundo y abierta respeto por nuestro mundo natural. Nacida en El Salvador y educada en Harvard, Mia Lehrer es un verdadero tesoro de Los Ángeles. Por su compromiso de traer la naturaleza a cada vecindario, por su dedicación a la comunidad, por su inspiradora gracia de diseños, honro a Mia Lehrer con el premio del espíritu de Los Ángeles.
Gracias. Gracias, señor alcalde y concejales. Nos dijeron que podíamos hablar tres minutos. Yo me he ajustado. Señor alcalde y concejal, gracias por su liderazgo a nivel nacional y en nuestra ciudad de Los Ángeles. Mi padre, don Enrique, y mi madre se sacrificaron dejando su negocio, familia y amigos para representar El Salvador, mi patria, en Jerusalén. Como embajadores, empeñaron su trabajo por quince años. Fue un honor. Beneficiaron a muchos profesionales y estudiantes con becas e intercambios entre profesionales y comercios de los dos países. Señor alcalde, algunas de tus responsabilidades en la Conferencia Democrática han llevado mi personal experiencia en círculo completo. Mi padre, mi papá, y no sé si puedo ser tan compositor como estos jóvenes, fue embajador de Israel en Jerusalén de 1980 a 1995. Uno de dos embasadas en esa ciudad. Empatía, comunidad, pasión y perseverancia fueron valores de mi familia instaurados profundo en nosotros. Quiero agradecer a muchas personas que me han apoyado, me han desafiado y me han inspirado. Mi familia, mis hermanos y hermanas, mis abuelos, mis nietos y nietos, mi esposo, el arquitecto Michael Lehrer, quien me llevó a Los Ángeles y quien me ayudó a crear, a ayudarme a crear a mis magníficos hijos, Benjamin, Rebecca y Rafael, y espero que a los nietos pronto, dos hijos casados, casados en la estación Union. Han sido tan pacientes y apoyados en mí. Mi personal y colegas han contribuido con su talento e intelectual proejo a nuestros esfuerzos, muchos de ellos latinos. Así que agua, comida, parques y ríos, nos importan mucho. El profesionalismo de algunas de las personas que trabajan alrededor de ti, como Paula Daniels, es significativo en enseñarnos a enfocarnos y a ser disciplinados. Mis anas, las dos salvadoreñas que llegaron aquí en los años 80, se educaron y se convirtieron en profesionales. Dr. Verna Dotreev, que pensé que iba a ser, que era la principal de la Escuela de la Universidad de Franklin Avenue de LA, estaba supuesta estar educando a mis hijos, pero cuando me convertí en voluntaria, ella me educó. Retiró a los 90, así que tengo mucho por hacer, y sigue por ahí con nosotros. Ella me educó en el construcción y la construcción de consenso. Mis clientes de diseño, muchos de ustedes que resultaron ser sus apoyos, los como Howard y Nancy Marx, y Joel y Karen Silver, y Steve Gordon, y Mort Lixorax, todos los cuales creen en mí y me permiten crear y contribuir a mis causas ambientales. Porque, vamos afrontar esto, no es necesariamente una operación para el beneficio. Dependo de defensores ambientales y profesores como Lewis McAdams, Anthony Lipgus, Bruce Sayito, Carlos Baquerano, Barbara O'Mearan, Carol Armstrong, que forman parte de ese ejército de tierra y río. Todos ayudamos unos a otros, y todos ayudamos a ti. Finalmente, mi héroe vivo, Joseph Edmiston. Quiero dejar mi ciudad, mi mundo mejor que lo que me fundé. Y él me sigue desafiando y me mantiene en mis rodillas. Así que lo que sé es que el diseño importa, la estrategia importa, el legado importa. Y en este mundo multicultural, como dijiste, súbelos. Porque con peligro con pecas puede ser salvadoreña. Estoy humillada por este honor, y quiero terminar con gracias, obrigada, danke, merci, todah. Gracias.
Sabes, la siguiente honoree es mi compañera. He conocido a María Elena Durazo desde que tenía...
Cuidado.
19 años. Ella era un líder estudiantil en California norte. Yo era un líder estudiantil en California sur. Comenzamos a networkar, tanto como ustedes lo hacen hoy. Y a lo largo de los años he visto a ella. He estado en una línea de piquete con ella. Ayudé a ella a ser presidente de su unión. Ella ayudó a mí a ser presidente de la mía. Fuimos a la escuela de derecho juntos, organizamos a los trabajadores inmigrantes juntos. Cuando ella podía hablar español fluidamente, y yo no podía hablar un poco de español. Ahora hablo bastante bien. He visto a ella como madre. He visto el amor que tiene por sus hijos, que tenía, que tiene por su partner. No está más con nosotros, Miguel Contreras. He visto la pasión que trae a su trabajo. Y sabes, todos deberíamos tener ese tipo de pasión. La pasión que dice: "No me importa lo que esté en frente de mí. Voy a luchar por lo correcto." La pasión que dice: "No me importa lo alto esta montaña. Voy a subir esta montaña, y voy a traer a alguien conmigo mientras subo la montaña." Así que verla a lo largo de estos años, cuando pienso en ella, cuando pienso, ¿cómo describes a alguien como esa? Pienso en integridad, pienso en honestidad, pienso en perseverancia y persistencia, pienso en pasión, pienso en una mujer de espíritu indomitable que nunca, nunca se reducirá ante la opresión e injusticia. Todos la conocen como líder del movimiento de trabajo aquí en L.A., una mujer que luchó por el día de ocho horas en los años 90, el salario mínimo, el salario de vida, la Seguridad Social, Medicare, la salud, la seguros de trabajo, la seguridad de trabajo. Pero principalmente, lo que sé de ella es, como una persona que tiene en su ADN esta noción de que estamos en este planeta para hacerlo un poco mejor. Sí, tuvo una gran educación en St. Mary's, y luego fue a la escuela de derecho y fue mucho más inteligente que yo en todas esas clases. Pero lo que la separaba de todos los demás es que sabía que tienes una gran educación para devolver. Devuelve a la familia, devuelve a la comunidad, devuelve al país. Y que devolvemos, en particular, a las personas que nos necesitan más. Así que para mí, no necesitaba leer todo esto, así que no lo leí. He conocido a ella mucho, mucho tiempo. Creo que es apropiado que la primera honoree fuera Dolores Huerta. Estás viendo a una mujer que un día será como Dolores Huerta. Porque ella es una mujer que nunca, nunca se reducirá a la injusticia. Y así, a cargo del ciudadano de Los Ángeles, me da gran, gran placer y gran honra darle al líder de la movilidad laboral aquí en L.A. el premio de Los Ángeles.
Gracias, alcalde. Gracias, compañera. Gracias como mi amigo. Y primero quiero reconocer a mi familia, que ha sido extraordinaria durante todos estos años. Por favor, sean. Mi hijo Mario y su esposa Alessandra, mis dos hermosas hermanas, Seneca y Sydney, y mi hijo menor, Michael. Son extraordinarias como familia que han sido tan apoyadoras de mí cuando no estaba por ahí, cuando estaba haciendo todo mi trabajo de unión. Se unieron, se mantuvieron unidas. Y cuando perdimos a Miguel, se volvió aún más fuerte como familia. Quiero contarle una historia sobre por qué entré en el movimiento de trabajo. Tengo una familia de 11. Fui tan afortunada que mis mayores hermanas y hermanos sacrificaron por mí para poder ir a la universidad. Y el día en que estaba saliendo de la casa para ir a St. Mary's, mi padre se acercó a mí, y era un padre muy, muy estricto, stern, lo cual estoy hoy agradecida por. No tenía todas esas pequeñas conversaciones con nosotros donde nos uniríamos y todo eso. Solo hizo lo que tenía que hacer para apoyar y mantener a nuestra familia unida. Y me sacudió a la lado, y sabes, fue un poco difícil para él, pero dijo: "Quiero disculparte." Y yo estaba como, ¿qué quieres decir? Y dijo: "Quiero disculparme porque deseaba haber sido capaz de hacer más por ti y poder pagar tu universidad y poder hacer las cosas que mereces." Y pensé a mí mismo, este es un hombre que crió a 11 hijos, que trabajó de mañana a mañana. Y nunca abandonó a su familia. Y obtuvo dos y tres trabajos, trabajó en las tierras. Y pensé a mí mismo, ¿cómo es posible que en esta gran nación, que un hombre sienta que no ha hecho suficiente cuando hace más que suficiente, todo lo que posiblemente podría haber hecho por nuestro país? Y dije: "Haré todo lo que pueda en mi vida para asegurarme de que ningún hombre o mujer que trabaja duro todos los días, no importa de dónde vienen, nunca, nunca tendrá que sentirse así por sí mismo." Y así me uní al movimiento de trabajo. Porque para mí, el movimiento de trabajo reconoce y respeta el trabajo duro de hombres y mujeres, ya sean bomberos o ya sean cuidadores de hogar, como los cuidadores que están aquí con nosotros hoy. Por favor, sean cuidadores de hogar. Y los cuidadores que me inspiraron, porque hicimos cosas como salir al borde de Figueroa y la Quinta y poner cunas donde contaron su historia, y fueron arrestados. Porque tenemos que reconocer el trabajo duro de hombres y mujeres, ya sean de frente o ya sean detrás de las escenas. Y fue los cuidadores que me inspiraron. Fueron los trabajadores de la granja que me inspiraron. Fueron los janatos que hicieron una procesión y golpearon, y Carlos Mahoney y Miguel hicieron una procesión a través de Downtown con esos janatos golpeados. Y hoy, hoy sigue siendo grupos de trabajadores, como los trabajadores de sanación, Carla Campos, que también está aquí hoy. Carla, y sabes, quien está luchando para asegurarse. Ella es una mujer junto a trabajadores que recogen nuestro basura. Recogen nuestro basura para sacar los reciclables. Y se despiden porque reportan violaciones de salud y seguridad al estado. Esa es una fuerza enorme. Para los drivers de camiones de carros, para los trabajadores de lavadoras de automóviles, todos aquí que están luchando y mostrando a la ciudad y al estado que el trabajo debe ser honrado, que el trabajo debe ser respetado, y especialmente el trabajo duro de nuestros nuevos estadounidenses. Y por último, también quiero agradecer a los soñadores, los soñadores, los jóvenes que están aquí hoy, que han tomado el batallón, y también van a ser líderes de esta gran nación. Y finalmente, nuevamente, agradecer a mi hermano, Antonio Villarreal. Ha sido un alcalde extraordinario, el mejor alcalde que esta ciudad y este país ha conocido por su visión, por su visión y por tomar cosas que son difíciles. Gracias, Consejo Presidente Wesson, y a todos ustedes, miembros del Consejo de la Ciudad. Muchas gracias.
Quiero traer al abogado de la ciudad, Trutanich, a decir unas palabras, y luego creo que todos los miembros del Consejo que están aquí querrían decir algunas cosas antes de que concluyamos.
Señor presidente, Consejo, estoy feliz de unirme a la celebración del Día del Heritage Latino. Los Ángeles es verdaderamente la ciudad más diversa de América, con diferentes culturas interactuando. Con el abogado de la ciudad con el nombre de Carmen Trutanich, no es necesario que un científico de Rocket para entender que no soy, mi familia no es de aquí, de estas partes. Ellos son de Corea y de Italia, como Joe Buscayeno de San Pedro también. Pero mi padre, que trabajó en una cantera durante 48 años, tuvo un sueño de que su familia haría mejor que lo hizo. Y así hoy es genial que celebramos el sueño, el sueño latino. Y estos niños que están detrás de mí hoy, pueden jugar en mi equipo cualquier día. Estos... Tendrán un legado cuando sean como yo, de crecimiento, libertad y éxito. Son lo que será nuestro futuro. Sabes, a veces no es políticamente correcto levantarse y decir que jóvenes como este, que traen nada más que éxito a este país, deberían estar aquí y recibir el sueño americano para contribuir a este gran país. Y a veces se te toma mucho calor por eso. Y señor alcalde, tengo que agradecerle porque has sido un líder en eso. Y Elena, también has sido un líder en eso. Y te diré esto, que es verdaderamente lo correcto de hacer, pero cuando haces lo correcto, a veces se te toma mucho calor. Y durante muchos años, se tomó mucho calor. Pero ahora la gente se está convirtiendo en que lo que estos niños representan es el futuro de este país, el futuro, el gran futuro. Down en el área de Harbor, tenemos una gran cultura latina, como sabes, Joe. Y te diré que esta ciudad solo es mejor para esa gran cultura latina. And I'll tell you that this city is only better for that great Latino culture. And so it is with great pride that, you know, we have in my office many great lawyers who are of Latino descent. And I could tell you this, someday, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to be able to hire new lawyers. And I look forward. I have to, you know, I have to throw the elbow, I have to, you know, I just, I have to. But someday, I look forward to these kids right here graduating law school and being able to say they are a member of the California State Bar and deputy city attorneys in this great city. Mr. President, thank you for allowing me to make these remarks. Mr. Mayor, thank you also.
And Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Attorney, Carmen, I heard you mention grayness, graying.
I see that you don't have very much gray hair.
Come talk to me, I can help you with that. Mr. Mayor.
Counselor?
Okay, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and congratulations to all of the honorees. I will never forget the first year that I joined my colleagues in participating in Latino Heritage Month, and it was an exciting time then, and it's just as exciting now. For me, Latino Heritage Month is more than just a celebration of Los Angeles, it's regardless of our ethnicity or our culture, this is a story that has to be told, and we can all learn from each other, to share with our friends and family. Congratulations to the young people here today for advocating for their right to have a decent education and to be able to compete here in the city and in this country. And to Maria Elena Durazo, congratulations. I didn't even recognize your children because they're all grown up now, which says a lot about where we are, too. But I want to say something special about a strong woman who is standing next to you. She is a passionate and compassionate professional whose commitment to her field of architecture and design has helped to support some outstanding projects here in our city. Now, I've had the honor of working with her, and her name is Mia, Mia Lehrer, and her team, on a vision to change the way that people see their own community at 54th and Avalon in South Los Angeles. Many of you have heard me talk about this park. When I first started and shared my dream for this urban oasis that would attract egrets and wildlife in the heart of very urban, very densely populated South Los Angeles, many people said it couldn't be done. But Mia and Mia Lehrer and associates, along with Somas and our city team, made that a reality. So Mia, your spirit, your passion is all over that park. This park was funded by the Clean Water Bonds, and this was a historic bus yard, and it was now transformed into a 10-acre sprawling urban wetland with water improvement, green space, an outdoor classroom, walking trails, and the potential for a community center. But Mia, I just wanted to say to you personally, it takes a visionary and an innovator like you to see potential when others may not, and to change the direction of people's lives, the trajectory of their lives, to make it better. So you're all deserving of the honor that you receive today. To the young people, to Maria Elena and to Mia Lehrer, you are all dreamers in the best sense of the word. And I just want to conclude by saying, our city is connected, and it's wonderful to see all the council generals here today. You know, the future of our own economic survival is inextricably intertwined with all of you and is very dependent upon our relationships and connectedness to all the Americas of the Western Hemisphere, if you will. The Dream Act is just one example of our reality here in Los Angeles. But what it is, is a roadmap to inclusivity for the future of everyone who belongs and has a right to be here. Thank you very much.
Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and to all the awardees, congratulations. I stand as a proud Angelino today, as we celebrate the Latino heritage and very similar to the Italian culture. Latinos, we are, and Italians, very similar in that we celebrate our faith, our family, our community, and our food. And we representing, what's that? Representing the Harbor area, which is such a working-class community. And my parents immigrated here from Italy, and very similar to many, hundreds of thousands of Latinos in this great city, for the purpose of providing for their family, the purpose of giving back to the community and working hard amongst the struggles as we all face as immigrants. So I stand before you as not only a proud San Pedrin, but a proud Angelino. So I want to thank the mayor and his team and all of the awardees, Maria Elena, who we just celebrated our Labor Day parade in Wilmington. Thank you, Maria Elena, for your continued love and passion for the working families across the city. Thank you, Mia, for putting together that beautiful park at the San Peter Waterfront Park. And congratulations to our young people, you are so inspiring. We love you, God bless you, and thank you.
Mr. Labange.
I rise to thank everyone. I love your story, 11 children, you're six of 11, so special. Maria Elena, the young students, Mia Lehrer, all your great work, but the pride of Roosevelt. Mr. Mayor, I'm very proud of you and what you did for our country last week as chairman of the National Democratic Convention. Thank you, thank you, council generals, everybody. It's a great day in L.A. when we're all together. Congratulations.
And to all the awardees, congratulations. Just give them another round of applause. My dear friend Roland, Mr. Alacón.
Yes, council members, this is a very proud day for those of us, especially those of us whose heritage is Latino. You know, I, after 20 years serving in public office and working in City Hall for more than, almost 30 years now, I can tell you that one of the things that I am most concerned about is the growing cynicism that is insidious throughout our country. And when I see the honorees, the dreamers, I choose to invest in that dream as opposed to investing in the cynicism. And I would only hope that the young people who are buying into those cynical words of negativism would really understand this dream. Because that dream is what gave each and every one of us the opportunity to succeed. And these young people represent our future, and they represent it because they understand their history. And if history repeats itself, we are guaranteed that they will emerge as tremendous leaders, whether it be in the fields of the environment, in the workplace, or in business. We are embracing today a notion that we should, we should understand their dream. I had that dream, I think each and every one of you had that dream. I only hope that we can spread that dream. And by virtue of the work that you do, we're going to do that. So congratulations to each and every one of you.
Mr. Zaim.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor. It's happiness that we're celebrating. It's also sad that this will be the last celebration for you and me and many of the colleagues, that we bring this together. And what I've said before when we honor other groups, only in America, only in the City of the Angels, would you see the diversity coming together and seeing the recognition that we do. And to the honorees, congratulations to the dream team. The mayor said, "Dream with me." You are dreaming the future, you're dreaming your future. Maria Elena, I've known you for a long time. With St. Mary's in Maraga, the Galls, when you said St. Mary's, it wrung on my ear because that's where my son Christopher graduated. St. Mary's is a beautiful place, Maraga, California. And to our architect, our lady who has vision to the recipients of this, but to the Latino community, a vibrant part of the City of the Angels, and our mayor who's led us in a progressive movement with the council folks, with our city attorney, with all of the colleagues here, to make it a better Los Angeles, an inclusive Los Angeles. Jose Wezar came from immigrant family and to be a council member, to be the former president of the Board of Education. I mean, Ed Reyes, when you look at this council, when you look at what we represent, the first Lebanese, Mr. Kocorin, the first Armenian, this is where we break through the glass ceiling. So to all of you, we've dreamed with the mayor, we continue to make it a better place to all. And this is a great month, and I know Channel 7 is involved in it, the community's involved in it. But to all of you, congratulations. And Mr. Mayor, while it's a happy day, the sadness is we won't see you doing this again, but we will honor you with the due recognition that you deserve. God bless you all, and thank you for today.
And Mr. Zaim, we'll invite you next year if you want to come. We'll even provide parking for you. Mr. Wezar.
Thank you, Herb.
Thank you very much. Que viva los Latinos en Los Ángeles!
Que viva!
Mr. Mayor, and you and your committee have really outdone yourselves this year. What an incredible, incredible group of honorees. Let's give them all a big round of applause. Congratulations. You know, to the dreamers, you remind us that the American dream is still alive. People come from all over the world to do better for themselves and for their families, and you're there in the trenches, not only making sure you do better for yourself, but for those who come after you. It's an incredible country that we live in. Not many countries in the world can see the types of opportunities we have, the type of freedom we have, the type of liberty we have. And these dreamers, through their work, reminds us of what a great country we live in. Thank you so much for your work, dreamers. And to Maria Elena, you know, you have repaid your father beyond belief, by anything he could have imagined. I'm sure he didn't expect anything in return. But for those who have better lives now, for the maids, the janitors, people in the fields, people who make this city function, who make this country function each and every day, we may not see them, we may not know they're there, but Maria Elena Durazo is standing up for them each and every day. And you have made your dad very, very proud. You know, several council members have already touted about the parks that Mia Lehrer has worked in their district. I can't say this park is in my district, it's in Ed Reyes's. But when I was on the school board, Ed Reyes and I worked together to make sure the Belmont Learning Center complex moved forward, and it's now the Roy Ball Learning Center. In order to get that last vote that we needed on the school board when I was there, we put in this park, 10 acres, to make it a beautiful park with a... Kids go there now and think they're in the mountains and the woods, and for a lot of these kids, they never really see that. But we got the best architect to design that. She understood it, those kids from the inner city, she knows what they were going through. So it wasn't just any old architect coming from anywhere else, but she really allowed to design a park that made it possible for those young people and people in that community who don't have many parks to have one of the best parks in the city of L.A. And she actually named that park. We went up there one time, and it was still just barren dirt. It was like that for like 10 years or so. Mia Lehrer looked out, looked at the beautiful skyline downtown L.A., and said, "What a vista hermosa." And it is a beautiful park. Mia, La Salvadoran, we are so, so proud of you. Thank you for all your work in the city of L.A.
I think everything that needs to be said has been said, but...
Not everybody said it.
Not everybody said it, so here I am. But the dreamers who are here, why do we fight for you? Because you are our story. My grandfather, who came here 30 years without documentation, not until he fought in World War II did he come back as a citizen. And were it not for that, I would not be here today. When I look at you, I see my grandparents, I see our city's history in your eyes. And when we did the workshop a couple weeks ago with many of you on the Deferred Action, we expected 30 or 40 people to show up. We had 500 people coming out the hallways at Logan Elementary School. And you and your parents, those who are sitting there, embodied what this country is when we looked at their faces and the hopes and the dreams that you have in your heart. So thank you. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, you could have done a lot of honoring, but you chose the dreamers. Maria Elena Durazo, somebody who has always stood up and has been a sister to all of us. Why do we work together and why do we fight on the same side? It's because of that same grandmother, who was a meat packer, but had a union job. My grandfather was a barber, but a union barber, back when there still were. My other grandmother, who was a union teacher, I wouldn't be here today. And so for the housekeepers that are here, and for your courage in stepping up and stepping out, the mayor was the chair of the DNC, and I remember when nobody else was supporting a young senator, and you had the courage to step forward, even in organized labor, and say, "This is somebody who himself is a dreamer." And you stepped forward as an early supporter of Barack Obama, and I will always remember that. And you can dance pretty well as well. On top of that, Mia Lehrer, God, Jose said it so right. I mean, Mia Lehrer is this great jewel who I was so pleased to see was on the honoree list today because everybody has seen her work, but nobody probably knows who she is besides those of us who work with her. But every Angelino should know her. There's park after park, vista hermosa, but if you haven't come to another one of Mia Lehrer's greatest hits, come out to the reservoir around Silver Lake and go see the meadow there, a place where every afternoon you see kids flying kites spontaneously, you see families coming together and people playing on the lawn and listening to a little bit of peace in a chaotic city. You have brought us that feeling, you've brought us that heart, and you truly are an amazing person. Gracias, and thank you. Mr. Mayor, I know this is your last one as mayor, but we hope that you'll be back here for Latino Heritage Month for many years to come.
First, I want to thank our council president's patience. We're almost there. But I truly want to thank my council colleagues for their support for the Trust Act. As the mayor has put together such an amazing presentation, I think we can see through the dreamers, through the words and inspiration Maria Elena Durazo, through the great work of Mia Lehrer, why we need to support the Trust Act. But this is just the beginning. When you have states taking away Mexican-American studies, when you have states who are emulating the anti-immigrant laws that we see in Arizona, it is these occasions that we need to stand up and let everyone know and celebrate what is so special about being Latino. The Western Hemisphere, North America, Central America, South America, the dominant language is Spanish, and that's something that's hard to understand and grasp. When we talk about our rights, we talk about our future, the struggles that have been articulated by our great guests is what's going to make us a much brighter future. So to the dreamers, Claudia, she just mentioned to me that she goes to school with my son, Angel. So we have someone from our own backyard who is struggling to fight for what is right. Maria Elena Durazo, it's a long time away from that first meeting when I wanted to be a candidate. And you addressed me so directly in saying, "Do you have what it takes to represent the needs of our community?" And working with you, I've learned a lot, and I feel very grateful that together we've seen many accomplishments. With Mia Lehrer, working on the Aller River Master Plan, she was part of a competing group of teams, but I'm glad you surfaced, you took that role. And for the next 20 years, we will see a beautification of a river system that will lift us at many different levels, economically, socially, recreationally, but more importantly, reestablish this great city with a great river running through it. And it couldn't happen without the mayor's support. Thank you, Mayor, for all that you have done. And as my last Latino Heritage Month experience, I thank you for supporting us throughout these years. Thank you very much. Que la vean muy bien.
By the way, for Councilmember Garcetti, thank you for doing that workshop. On September 22nd, at the LA Convention Center, there will be a workshop for young people, for dreamers who qualify for Deferred Action, to go and get all of the information that they need to apply and the like.
To see an attorney, 5,000 people.
We expect 5,000 people, there'll be attorneys there to help. Please, all of you, let everybody know, September 22nd, Saturday, beginning at...
9:00 to 5:00 p.m., Contact Dream Team Los Angeles.
9:00 to 5:00 p.m., Contact Dream Team Los Angeles. And then finally, I want to acknowledge the staff that put this together, the co-chairs, Rafa Gonzalez, who's not here with us because he's now working for the Dodgers. Oh, he is here. Rafa Gonzalez, and Andrea Alarcón. Come on, Rafa. Andrea Alarcón, the president. And all my staff that did a lot of hard work. Finally, we're going to go over here, I want to thank Olga Garaya, our executive director. I don't know if she's still on her honeymoon. I don't know if she's still on her honeymoon. I talked to her a couple days ago, and she was on her honeymoon, and I put her to work. I put her to work anyway. You know, evil man that I am. So I want to thank her for her work, you know, on Latino Heritage Month. Cultural Affairs, as you know, helps with the calendar and the posters, so we want to thank them as well. And then finally, remember, all throughout the month, as we do, we have both a poster contest and a creative writing contest, and it's a beautiful thing to see, everybody, a young Jewish kid win the best creative writing about Latino leadership, a Latino kid to win African-American, an African-American kid, young person, student, to win for Native American Heritage Month. It's a beautiful thing to see when we honor our diversity, what it does for all of us in terms of making us better. And so, we're going to take a picture over here, and then we'll be finished.
Maria Elena, gorgeous grandchildren. They are gorgeous. I've got a grandson I'll introduce him to 20 years from now.
If we could have Mr. Englander and the mayor at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to ask if Mr. Zine and Mr. Alarcon, the two of them can join me as well.
You guys are going to go over there. All of you are going to go over here.
I'm calling you out. Calling the three of you out.
You guys are going to go over there. I just got to do this thing.
We'll be real quick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today marks the fourth anniversary of one of the deadliest train accidents in U.S. history, the Chatsworth Train Accident. 25 people lost their lives. These were mothers, fathers, children, family and friends, and one of our very own, an LAPD police officer. Hundreds of others were seriously injured. Today, they're still having to deal with those lifelong injuries. For those of us that responded, the hundreds of police officers, firefighters, local community leaders and heroes, our lives will forever be changed. On the anniversary, we placed a memorial plaque at the site with the names of all the victims and held a community memorial...
Mr. Englander, let me stop you. Folks, if I could ask you to stay just two minutes, we're only, this is a very somber moment, if I could ask you to stay just for two minutes until Mr. Englander finishes. Just give me two minutes.
Today, thank you. We must continue to pray for the families, the victims, and the heroes that rushed to aid. Today, we remember. Today, we reflect, and we will always keep them in our hearts. I'm joined by the mayor, who not only responded to the scene four years ago that day, but he spent the night, all night there, helping the first responders and helping and working with the victims and the families. I'm also joined by two council members, Dennis Zine and Richard Alarcon, who didn't look at the boundaries of their council districts, but heard it on the radio and immediately got in their vehicles, rushed to the scene to render aid and support. They too stayed and helped. And so I ask that we have a moment of silence to remember this horrific event and keep the families and the loved ones in our hearts forever. Please join me.
Could everybody please rise?
Mr. Mayor, would you like to say a few words?
I'll say it. You know...
Please be seated.
On Monday, we announced that LA, that MetroLink, will have, be the first commuter train organization to have positive train control. I dedicated my efforts to bringing positive train control, which is a technology advancement that will hopefully prevent accidents like this from happening in the future, because what it does is, if there's human error, it stops the train when an identifiable set of factors occur. And I was saying there, and I've said it a few times, I will never, ever forget, and by the way, he didn't mention, but Mr. Englander was also there through the night. I was there for 26 hours, I got there 45 minutes after the accident. I didn't leave till the last person was taken out. I couldn't have been prouder of our first responders, firefighters, our police officers, the people like the three individuals here who I saw without their jackets, helping people get aid. I'll never forget the families. I had to, because the coroner was so busy informing families that they had lost loved ones, and because I had been with them the night before, I had to tell families that they lost their son, their daughter, their husband. And, you know, I'll never forget the trauma, the absolute grief that these families had. And, you know, I'm glad that you are remembering those victims today. I hope everybody read the paper about the caps that they have on settlements for these people, and the fact that many of them aren't really going to get the kind of care that they need because they've artificially capped what people can get in a train accident. We've got to remember these families, acknowledge them. My hope is that we never have anything like this again with positive train control, but, you know, God only knows. I just want to thank you for being here today and acknowledging these families and our first responders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, actually, I didn't jump in my car. I was passing by just a little while after the accident occurred, and there was a police officer standing on Topanga Canyon, and I asked if he needed assistance. And in all my years, I've asked police officers if they needed assistance on occasion, and I've never had one say yes. They said, usually they say, "I've got it under control, don't worry about it." He said, "Yes, I could use your help." And so I pulled over, my wife and baby were in the car, because we were driving to Topanga Canyon, to Topanga Plaza, because my daughter's baptism was the next day. And we were asked to hike down from Topanga and check from the back of the train forward, and we encountered the first triage site at the impact location. And of course, I tried to comfort the engineer from the union train, who you could imagine what kinds of trauma he was going through. He was severely injured, but he was also more troubled by not knowing what happened. And then I comforted a man who passed away shortly after mumbling a few words to me. And as I have met some of the families, it turns out that, I believe that young man was our mailman here in City Hall. So it was an irony that I encountered him in that way on that day. His name is at my desk, Michael Hammersley, will remain in my heart forever. But really, the incident, I think, is a tribute to Los Angeles, not because it occurred, but because the way the city rallied to help people. I saw so many first responders who came from out of their houses, within blocks and even miles away, to come and help, comfort people, save lives, and carry people out of the train. And so I think we have the best emergency response system in the entire world, and I say that with some experience with earthquakes and fires and the like. But on that day, in the midst of all the tragedy and all the pain and all the suffering and some horrendous, horrendous injuries, it was an amazing community that came together to help save lives, notwithstanding where they came from, who they were, what their sexual preference was. They were just trying to help human beings. And so with that, I do want to say one political comment, and that is that it is a shame that many of those victims cannot be fully compensated because of a ridiculous cap at the federal level that train accidents shall never pay more than $200 million, when many of those victims will be suffering for the rest of their lives and do not have full compensation to be able to pay for it. And I think the city council has taken a position to take that cap off, but I only hope that Congress will recognize that the costs of these kinds of accidents will only increase as we go forward.
Thank you.
Councilmember Englander, thank you for bringing this to the floor this morning. I clearly recall you carrying bodies as those bodies were being removed from the train. I clearly remember the CERT team members, the members of the community that were coming out to help, the helicopters landing, it was like a battle zone. It was a site that you'll never forget. The mayor, Mr. Alarcon, so many people that were there offering assistance. Many city employees were involved in that. Many city employees were seriously injured in that crash. And in their memory, we keep that memory in our mind, in our hearts, in our spirits. And while we move on with life, their lives were changed forever. I remember the police officer in uniform. When they lined up to remove her from the train, an officer simply trying to get to her home after her tour of duty. So many lives lost in that tragic, tragic crash. I want to thank you for the remembrance. I can only say, may they rest in peace. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
I just wanted to stand and thank you for this moment. I stand to recognize Bob Janavici, who was the zoning administrator for the planning department for many, many years. On that day, he never came back to work. And just a few weeks ago, they commemorated the fifth-floor mezzanine room in his name, but he is an example of all of the talent that we lost here in the city family. So I want to rise to recognize Bob for his work and for what he's done. He's recuperating, but we lost a great man in the planning department. Thank you.
Ms. Perry?
I also wanted to recognize and remember the survivors. And Bob, he was here, like Mr. Reyes just said, and, you know, even though he was severely injured, you know, what goes on inside of him is still there, and he's the same Bob as before, it's just the exterior's changed a little bit. He was sitting in a wheelchair, and he was so happy, he had his grandchildren sitting on his lap, and he was smiling, and people were celebrating him and being thankful that he's still with us. And so I think it's important to remember those we've lost, and also to be thankful for the ones who survived and that they're still with us and still contributing. So it's a day of mixed emotions, but it's a day that we should never forget.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Alarcon, Buscayno, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Wezar, Carrasco, Corin, LaBanche, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zine, Wesson, 12 members present, and a quorum. Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Carrasco moves, Englander seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Zine moves, Reyes seconds. That brings us to where, the agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, there is a request from the Department of Building and Safety to receive and file items 2A, 2D, 2E, and 2G. Again, 2A, D, E, and G.
Without objection. Any cards?
Mr. President, items 1 and 2 are items noticed for a public hearing. There are cards on both, sir.
Okay, we'll hold those. That moves us to what, items 3 through 5?
Yes, sir. There are items for which public hearings have been held.
Any specials? Seeing no specials, let's prepare to vote on that. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Next section?
Mr. President, items 6 through 18 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, let's hold item 12. Do we have cards? Oh, in fact, without objection, those items are now before us. Let's hold item 12. Members, specials? Mr. Garcetti? I didn't hear you.
If we could continue number 18 until Friday, please?
What date is that, Mr. Clerk? We'll continue item 18.
Friday, September 14, sir.
Okay, without objection. Any other specials? What about cards?
Yes, sir.
And they're on what items?
Mr. President, we have cards on items 6, 12, 13, and 17.
Okay, we'll hold those items. Madam Clerk, we're going to vote on the remaining items. If you'd please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special or public comment for items not on today's agenda.
Okay, Mr. Garcetti?
I'm sorry, the folks who have cards here very patiently on number 17 said if there's no members that want to call it special, they're willing to pull their cards and see that go on consent.
Okay, on item 17, members, there are no speakers in the queue. Let's prepare to vote on that. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
If they could just stand up and we thank them for their patience.
And we will enter all of the cards you filled out. We'll put them in our council record. Mr. Reyes? Okay, Mr. Clerk, what I'm going to do, I'm going to, we'll jump around a little bit here. We're going to start off... Mr. Reyes is going to start off going through general public comment. First speaker is Dr. Tom Williams.
For public comment. Today, we've, I'm sorry, Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council, and a proud father of Dylan Williams, who died a year ago today. We're thankful here in LA that we have a wonderful diversity of population, but there is weakness. It was brought to us last week by Stand Up to Cancer. It was also brought to us, right here in council, by Mr. Rosenthal. We all experience it. The problem, though, stands with the fact that we're so diverse that getting a proper donor match for a bone marrow transplant is very, very difficult. We have to go to the press, we have to do this. Isn't there a better way? And today, as an anniversary of my son's death, at the age of 41, after 10 years of fighting cancer, I am going to be shaving my head. I'll finish it after council. But it works. People will react... People will react only when there's fear, where there's greed. But here's, every person will experience cancer, either directly or indirectly, in their life. And we do need to have a program within the city of Los Angeles for our diversity, where we bring our employees, our service people, our public, together to solve this problem. We need a good bone marrow transplant program within the city of L.A. Elsewise, we'll lose more sons and daughters. Thank you.
Dr. Clyde Williams, my condolences to you and your son for 10 years ago. Okay, our next speaker? Daniel Jones? Daniel Jones, are you here? And then we'll have Arminak Norajian after Mr. Jones. Good day, sir.
Oh, wait a minute, I forgot something.
Your turn, Mr. Jones?
I forgot something.
Okay, please.
Good morning.
Good day, sir. You could start.
I did. I don't need any interruptions.
All right.
Is there a wordsmith in this place, Mr. Attorney? Let's see here. All of this that you just had this morning? I'm here to protect that. I double-checked my rights. I now legally have them all. I, Daniel Jordan Jones, officially declare a state of war emergency. State Code Title II, Section 8558, Paragraph A. If there is a perceived intimate threat of invasion or occupation, can be proclaimed with or without the governor's proclamation. Here's the important part, people. Period. That means anybody in the boundary of the state of California can call, and I just did legally on record. The first time I did it was from the librarian. Today is from me, for my constitutional duty to protect that constitution as just the prerequisite for me being in this state. My due process rights are being violated by the constitutional of the federal level. This is a state versus federal boundary issue.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Norajian? Arminak Norajian's next.
Good morning, City Council members. Good morning, fellow Angelinos. My name is Arminak Norajian, and I'm a liberal Democrat, a human rights advocate, and liberal blogger on youtube.com as well. Well, I proudly announce that I will run for Los Angeles City, for the City of Los Angeles City Council this November, as actually, I actually try to bring more progressive ideas and show example of progressive government, you know, to people of Los Angeles. Actually, I, as a liberal Democrat, I propose and ask City Council members to raise taxes against wealthy homeowners and rich corporations, so we could pay City of Los Angeles fair share, as well as actually about half of Angelinos do support raising taxes, according to a proposed, at least estimate of office of clerk of the City of Los Angeles. Well, actually, I also propose to introduce a comprehensive ban against so-called medical marijuana dispensaries, and do support that city ordinance that bans, that really, about, that really bans, you know, so-called medical marijuana dispensary. As state law prohibits selling marijuana for profit, you know, I do ask city police, you know, to audit and conduct sting operation against those so-called medical marijuana dispensaries, so they won't be able to sell marijuana for profit, so they won't be able to rip off Angelinos and leave them practically homeless. And also, I ask City Council members to cut the egregious wages of $178,000 in half and give that money to city workers. I believe that I can create jobs in the City of Los Angeles by receiving wealth from large corporation oil producers and manufacturers, and giving my money to subcontractors.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clerk would like to do is go to item 6. We do have a guest here, our commissioner. Please read that to the record. We do have two cards. We have, as our commissioner comes to the table, we have Cecil Ingram and Daniel Jones on item 6. Cecil Ingram here?
I'll give him.
Cecil Ingram? Good day, Mr. Ingram.
That's what I didn't expect. Hello, my name is Cecil Ingram. I am here to speak on behalf of Commissioner Wolf's appointment. It is, it is with some pride that today of all days, he is going to be appointed on Latino Heritage Month, because he is part Latino. You come from Uruguay, right? I had to get that right. Didn't want to piss anybody off. As a constituent and as a longtime friend, I have seen the passion, the commitment, and the absolute love of the job of Commissioner. He will go the extra mile for any of his constituents. It doesn't matter where they're from, what problem they have. He will do whatever he can do. And if he, and if he can't get the right connections, he will, he will go and look for the right connections until the problem is finished. I have very rarely known anyone with that level of commitment, disabled or not. It is a great privilege for the disabled community to have someone like Mr. Wolf. And I am lucky and honored to have him as a friend and working for me and the rest of the community as Commissioner. And look out. If you thought he was good in his previous terms, you haven't seen anything yet.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Thank you for making your trip to City Hall. And to introduce our commissioner is our Councilmember Alarcon.
Councilmembers, Mr. Wolf was not available to be interviewed in the committee because he was recognizing religious holidays. So we waived his appointment out of committee. And I just want to say that Mr. Wolf is one of the longest-serving commissioners in the city of Los Angeles, and that in and of itself is a tremendous tribute to your patience, to your concern about the city of Los Angeles, and of course, his deep passion and concern for his brothers and sisters who find themselves with some kind of disability. I know he's very passionate, the time that he served demonstrates that. But if you would, David, if you could just please tell the council why you want to continue to serve on the Commission on Disability, and some of the projects you're working on.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. I believe it is, I believe it is extremely incumbent upon all of us as a community to come together, not only one community, but our several communities united. This is the only way that we will prosper and advance. I believe that our needs right now are exactly as those in the larger community of housing, transportation, education, healthcare. It is only by coming together and working together as one that we can achieve greatness for the city of Los Angeles. I am proud to be an Angelino and an American, and I would like to thank you for letting me serve once again. I am deeply honored and greatly humbled by your confidence in me, and I would like to thank, I must thank, the mayor. But most importantly, I would like to thank those who are sitting right behind me, my father, my sister.
Wow, Colonel Sanders.
As Mr. Ingram said, they are from Uruguay, and I too am by law of Uruguay, a citizen. I am also very deeply humbled to have another sister of mine from El Salvador here today, Miss Nelda Alvarez, who did not come up to the dais. But I would like to, right now, if I could, call one of the other members of the Commission who was here, and a former City of Los Angeles AIDS officer, Mr. Stephen Simon, to come up and join me, as I am confirmed. It would be a great honor for me...
Steve, come on up.
...to have them up here with me, as I'm confirmed. I would like to call Mr. Vice President Luis Mata up with me, as I'm confirmed also.
Councilmembers, at this time, I'd like to introduce Tom Labange for a special presentation. This, Tom, having served as the Chair of the Arts Parks Committee for many, many years, and having worked with Mr. Wolf for many years, has a special presentation.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. President, Mr. Wesson, everybody. David Wolf is a champion, an angel in the City of Angels, and since Mr. Bradley's time, he has come to this building, through Mr. Riordan's time, Mr. Hans' time, Mr. Vero Ghost's time. And David, on behalf of the City Council, and Mr. Alarcon and myself, this great plaque with your name on it saluted you for all the work you do for all the people, for all the people. Thank you. Thank you so very much. Well, I'm glad your sister's Eddie's here, and your dad, Professor Wolf, it's all right. And every time we cut a curb in the city of Los Angeles, and thank you, Street Services, for being in my district this last two weeks, every time we cut a curb, that's accessibility for people. And you've made that happen, David Wolf. Another hand for David Wolf.
Thank you.
All right, good. We're going to take a picture on the side, David.
Mr. Garcetti?
I would like to ask one thing. I have a statement for the record that I would like to be put in the record.
You give me that statement, and I'll give it to the clerk, who will give it to the president, who will stamp it, and it will be in the record, right?
Yes. Mr. Garcetti?
I've never quite had a confirmation hearing like this, but I think it bodes pretty well for the vote, that you already have a plaque. But I want to thank you, David, you're an incredible friend. You've been another L.A. institution that has done so much, and the love that's around you in this horseshoe is incredible. You're there not just on issues of disability, you're there on Los Angeles issues, no matter what the topic is. And certainly, thank you for fighting to make sure our work is not done, and when there's cutbacks, that we don't forget that the Department of Disability needs to have our support, and needs to continue to push forward. And there isn't, I don't think, a month that goes by in any of our districts where somebody doesn't come up to us about accessibility, and then a host of other issues. And accessibility isn't just physical accessibility, it's language accessibility, it's making sure that there's government accessibility as well. So I look forward to another confirmation hearing for you here. I think you're going to get it unanimous. And Mr. Labange, thanks for coming with a little extra to honor our great, great Angelino. Congratulations, David.
Mr. Englander?
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Wolf. A dear friend and resident of CD12, we have spent a lot of time over the years talking about issues and the effects of issues and decision-making, and how it impacts those disabled folks in our community. In fact, when I was taking care of my sister, and she was, before she passed away, and was in the wheelchair, you were helping me a lot, with giving me ideas on how to care for and the issues and obstacles that we face every day. And I can't thank you enough for being a personal friend and all your help. On a professional level, folks, I don't know if you know, but his resume is incredibly impressive, and his accomplishments, David, you are, it's just phenomenal. But first and foremost, a graduate of, Mr. Labange will like this, Granada Hills High School, the Highlanders, very good, the California State University of Northridge, a CSUN grad, USC grad, in fact, wrote a thesis on the theory of the impact of time in the crisis decision-making process of the present United States, and the time decision-making continuum. It's a great thesis, and you've done a great job on that, and numerous awards and accolades, the Gold Silver Bear of Miller High, California Outstanding Student Award, JEMCO Scholarship Award, Dean's List, time and time again, the Gold Key Honor Society, recognitions awards for years from the city of Los Angeles, and of course, Disabled Students Organized and Distinguished Graduate Student Award from CSUN. Mr. Wolf, you are just a phenomenal Angelino and a great friend, and I compliment you and thank you for all your dedicated service to so many people in the city of Los Angeles. God bless you.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I just wanted to say that I, when I think of you, I think of someone who is incredibly tenacious, extremely substantive, exceptionally persistent, exceedingly patient, and willing to teach and to advocate until he gets his way. And so I am, I think this is one of the best reappointments that we've seen in a very long time, and we're lucky to have you, and your knowledge and your depth and breadth of your life experience makes us a better city.
Thank you. Okay, there are no more speakers on the queue. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Congratulations. Okay, what we're going to do now... Okay, what we're gonna do now, all of you that are here for Item 12, I'm gonna take that, that item up next, so city staff, you may wanna start making your way forward. Before we go to 12, I'm gonna call up Item 13, and we will have one minute general, I mean, public comment on the other, the items from here on out. So Item 13, Michael, carry on.
Item 13, once again, the rent escrow program. My large questions for you, that nobody's paying attention about, are how you continue to put properties in rent escrow, but yet you fail to clean your own properties. I have a suggestion. If there's a property in a CD that's not being cleared, that we fine the council member of that district for not having it done. Same thing as you put in in rent escrow. Let's charge them, what's the, $1,000 a day? I guarantee you'll get done. Mr. Weisar seems to walk away, which is one of the large contributors to this. It is brought to his attention, Mr. Reyes is another one. When we bring these things to their attention, that they have properties in their district that are blight, and they choose not to clean them. You are told these things are in your community, you are told they are blight.
Thank you, Michael.
Please clean them.
Okay, on this item, there are no speakers in the queue, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now we'll do Item 12. Okay, I'm gonna call, before we hear from the city staff, we're gonna do a public comment. One minute, Robin Gilbert. I can't make out this Joe, I think it's Joe, maybe you could just come up and pronounce your name, William Rodriguez Morrison, Teri Ellen Robinson, when I call your name, please come forward. Okay, if you're up there, you go right ahead, sir, and just identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Westin. Name is William Rodriguez Morrison, I'm a candidate for City Council. Of course, I haven't been here in council chambers for a while, but I've been observing some of your meetings. Now, one of the main things, I know domestic violence, since I am actually, I just retired from the Neighborhood Watch Program as a block captain, but domestic violence is the same thing as abusive relations.
We gotta stay on the subject, this is Item 12.
Oh, this Item 12?
Yes, sir.
I thought it was public comments.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, we're on Item 12.
Okay.
Because I know you know the rules.
All right, I'll just go on Item 12. Being a candidate for City Council, I think it's Ordinance B, doesn't make any sense, and I think I'm supporting this right now at this present time, the way it's written. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward, Robin, or Teri.
Teri Ellen Robinson.
Teri, please come forward, Wayne Williams, Cheyenne Gusterson, let's go.
Okay. To the City Council members, I remember you unanimously voted to create an amendment against Citizens United, the bad definition and point of the Supreme Court. Well, I'm here today to talk about something that relates to this thing at the same time. Today, I am asking council members to take a similar action to protect Los Angeles voters by supporting Ordinance A, to have a strong matching system that strengthens the voices of small donors and candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
Good morning. My name is Wayne Williams, I'm a board member of the California Clean Money Campaign, and I thank you for your support in pushing this process forward, and I ask you to support the option A, as it's placed before you today. And in lieu of everyone wanting to get to lunch, I will stop there.
Thank you, sir. Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Cheyenne Gusterson, I am with Common Cause, and I am here to also ask you to vote yes on Ordinance A, and delay the signature voting, the signature gathering until 2015. The city clerk's office estimates that it would cost $213,000 to tally the signatures in 2013. So to save city funds, and red tape, and make this process simple for matching funds for our candidates, I ask that you vote yes on Ordinance A. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, and then I'm looking for Annulee Crowman, Toby Draggert, please, sir, just state your name.
Hi, my name is Nick Batzdorf, I live in Sherman Oaks, and I volunteer at the California Clean Money Campaign. I too am here to support, and urge you to vote for Ordinance A. And I wanted to put a little emphasis on the importance of this issue. It's the first step, it's a small first step, but it's an important first step to solving really the biggest problems that face our times at the local level, national level, even the planetary level. Matching funds from small donors will be, is an important counterbalance to the unfair and inappropriate influence of interests that have unlimited amounts of money to spend for their causes, to publicize their causes. And those groups of people, not individuals, groups of people, have agendas that don't necessarily coincide with those of what we need to do as a republic. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, just state your name, and then I'll be looking for Trent, I need you, and Craig Preston, yes.
Hi, good morning, I'm Anjuli Cronheim, I'm an organizer with California Common Cause. Again, I wanted to echo what folks have said, that we would support Ordinance A over Ordinance B, because it would save resources and be more red taped for these candidates. I just wanted to say that when we started this process, we were looking how to adjust the trigger system to ensure that L.A. City would actually be compliant after a couple Supreme Court cases. The simplest approach would have been what happened in the special election in CD-15, a three-to-one match for both the primary and the general. We think that that system really worked, and the purpose of the matching fund system is to encourage a robust candidate field, give voters greater choice, empower voters to be heard, even if they can only give small dollar contributions. So we look forward to what will happen in 2013, and also a higher match in the primary for 2015.
Thank you, next.
Good afternoon, President and Council, my name is Craig Preston with the California Clean Money Campaign. I'm a field organizer, and I wanted to speak today that I'm recognizing that on the back door, it says "Law is Reason Without Passion." But I did want to share that, yes, that's true, but however, there is a lot of passion out there, passion where people are feeling that they either want a voice, and they're having a struggle to get a voice in the system, or they're angry because they really want that voice, and that struggle produces the anger. So we'd like to see that the momentum of Measure H would continue, that 75% of the electorate in Los Angeles voted on Measure H to strengthen the public funding system, and we'd like you to continue that here today on supporting Ordinance A, so that this funding of the matching fund will continue to be strong here in the Los Angeles. That is the spirit of this, so that small contributors can have more of a voice in the system, and that candidates that would be representing those small contributors can have a place here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Trent, and then I need Toby Draggert and Arminik Norjanian.
Toby's not here.
Okay.
Thank you, Council Trent Lang, President of the California Clean Money Campaign. It's been a pleasure to work with all of you in this process, and especially with the, also with the Ethics Commission and city attorney staff for building this. This is a very important ordinance that we have before in terms of strengthening the voice of small donors, and helping give people more confidence in the system. It's a good first step, we urge your eye vote on Ordinance A, to keep it nice and simple for 2013. And of course, we definitely urge you, there's some, to look at strengthening the system after 2013, when there will hopefully be more funds in the system in terms of providing the increased levels of funding in the general election, that Councilmember Krikorian had looked, asked for a report back, and also the four-to-one match in the primary election starting the next 2015 election, that Councilmember Weisar had asked for a report back. So we hope we can look at that after the experience of 2013. Thank you all very much for supporting Ordinance A.
Thank you. Arminik Norjanian. And if there's a last call for Robin Gilbert.
Respectable City Council members, dear fellow Angelinos, actually, I do support indoors with Resolution 12, motion required, you know, and in order for, because this resolution creates progressive legislation, you know, city, progressive city governance, that would allow Angelinos to have fair services from their politicians. Well, actually, this particular Item 12, you know, should be passed, you know, and an order should be created to distribute with public matching funds, you know. And I understand that might help politicians, you know, it was designed to, was fun for all politicians, so we'll be able to conduct with political campaigns in the city, and beat those wealthy donors, or something like that, who might intervene, you know, in the city of Los Angeles affairs. Well, vote for this particular Resolution 12.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, let's get ethics staff to come forward. Heather, if you and your team could please come forward, just follow Mr. Labange. Thank you, Tommy. Okay, where are we at with this now?
Good morning.
Good morning to you.
Actually, good afternoon.
You're right.
Heather Holt for the Ethics Commission. We have today ordinances that have been transmitted by the city attorney's office, which would change the campaign finance ordinance, as well as the administrative code provisions regarding the matching funds program. At the last discussion that we had about this, the Ethics Commission was asked to report back on several items, and we provided a written response, but I would be happy to summarize the response, if that would be helpful.
At this point, we have no speakers in the queue. I know there were some concerns raised, so why don't we go specifically to those two concerns?
Okay, and, I'm sorry, which two concerns were you?
I know, there was one concern where it related to electronic.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
With regard to the matching funds program, and I'm sorry, are you referring to the report back items that we were asked to comment on?
That's what I'm referring to.
Okay. There, it, one of the requests was a report back on the proposal that candidates would receive a one-to-one rate of match if they qualify for the ballot with 500 signatures and a filing fee, and candidates who qualify for the ballot with 1,000 signatures and no filing fee would receive the higher rate of match, which would be either four-to-one in both primary and general elections, or two-to-one in a primary and four-to-one in a general. There are some significant resource issues associated with that, which have been raised, which were raised in our written response, as well as by the city clerk's office. In, since 2007, according to data from the city clerk's office, no more than two candidates in any given election have submitted more than the 500 signature, have not attempted to qualify for the ballot with more than 500 signatures. Based on our projections for the number of candidates for the 2013 elections, in addition to historical data about how many candidates typically file nominating petitions, and how many candidates generally attempt to qualify for the matching funds program, we estimate that 104 candidates in 2013 may double the number of signatures that they submit in order to qualify for the ballot, so that they can receive the higher rate of match. That would be an exponential increase in the amount of work for the city clerk's office in terms of verifying the signatures, because the signatures would have to be verified in the same way as signatures on the nominating petition. There would not be a corresponding increase in the amount of time in which the city clerk's office would have to do that. So there are some significant resource issues there. There are also some logistical issues that have not been fully worked out between the city clerk's office and our office regarding the creation of the forms, and making sure the forms are distributed to candidates within the timeframes that are allotted in the law, processing the forms, housing the forms, and that kind of thing. We strongly recommend that if this requirement moves forward, that it be delayed in implementation until 2015, and that is one of the options that is presented, that's in Ordinance A. That would permit enough time for city clerks, folks, and our people to work out some of these details, and try to reduce the potential confusion associated with that.
Okay. Mr. Englander, followed by Mr. Coretts.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank you so much, because you've been working tirelessly on top of, oh yeah, I think we're in the middle of a 2013 campaign cycle.
We are.
And I don't know that you've gotten any other staff in addition, after these proposals have come in, to vet all this stuff. And so I want to thank you, and I support it, and as you know, it was my amendment. I support the delay approving it today. I ask colleagues that would recommend Option A and Option C, that we approve it, but approve it now, but give the city ethics, the clerk, time to do all the things they need to do. It's been, it's supported by the staff. The city attorney, by the way, has also opined on the legality of it, and so, and I want to thank my staff for working very closely with you as well, in your office, and the city attorney's office, and the clerk's office, and everybody that came up with this, as well as all the folks who made these proposals, and all the speakers who also supported Option A. So Option A and Option C, I support. One of the, couple things, one, I wanted to ask you if you had any comments on some of the new disclosure issues as well, and so if you can address that, and then, so I'll let you, go ahead, if you can hold my time, and if you can address that, and then I've got one other concern I wanted to ask about as well.
Sure, I did want, oh, pardon me, that's way too loud. I did want to raise a couple of issues with regard to the proposed ordinance, in Ordinance A, regarding disclosure and disclaimers. One is a very technical correction that should be made in proposed Section 49733(c). That section currently refers to Section 49731b, and the reference really should be to 49731a2. Highly technical, but still should be addressed. The other issue is that we have heard from some folks since our last discussion about the requirement regarding contributor information. One of the changes that is proposed, that was proposed by the Ethics Commission, is when a non-individual, meaning a non-human, is making a contribution, that the contributor's primary purpose or primary business interest be disclosed. It has been raised that there may be some technological issues associated with that, because many candidates rely on software that is provided by the state, which does not accommodate that kind of information. So I wanted to raise that with the suggestion that we could move forward and reevaluate, or that it might be something that could be eliminated at this point.
Mr. President, based on that recommendation, I would suggest that we go ahead at this time and strike out Section 49.7.16, Page 13, Item B, and that they come back with the recommendations as suggested for more clarity, and so we'll need a second on that. That's basically for the non-individuals, since the forms, as was just stated, don't have the place to put it. So I just, we need a second to go ahead on her recommendation, to strike that out for now, and they'll come back with more clarity.
I'll second it.
Great, thank you. And then, thank you for that. The other, the other quick issue that I had was the disclaimer on, and I'm a firm believer in disclosure. I'm a firm believer that we have to make it readily available and accessible to all to know who's paying for these ads, whether it's the campaign, a candidate, or an independent expenditure. And more disclosure is critical. There's one thing I'm really not a big proponent of, although everybody does it, and I'm to blame as well, are these robo-calls and telemarketing calls, and I think the residents and the voters are tired of them. And so, unless they come from Eric Garcetti, but everybody else is tired of them. But it gets to be a point where over-disclosure is an issue. And what I mean by that, guys, is what's being proposed here, first of all, in the disclosure requirements for verbal communications, we have more on our books in the city of L.A. than the state of California, than any other city, county in the United States, and more disclosure available electronically, and we're doing a good job, and we're adding more to it. But just as one scenario, and I just, we just sat here and clocked it out, this is one scenario on disclosure, and this is an average scenario for a radio or a telemarketing call, that the disclosure is, and if, give me the time, because they're gonna, please, we just clocked this out. As an example, it would say, after your full message, "Paid for by the Citizens for a Better Los Angeles, 200 North Spring Street, Room 405, Los Angeles, California, 913... a Better Los Angeles, 200 North Spring Street, Room 405, Los Angeles, California, 90012. Major funding by Los Angeles Jobs Political Action Committee, sponsored by Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce and Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, AFL-CIO. Committee on Political Education in the amount of $500,000. Not authorized by or coordinated with a city candidate. Additional information is available at www.ethics.lacity.org." That's 28, 20, 29 seconds on a 30-second spot. There was no ad. You've got one second to say, "Richard Alakon, paid for by Citizens." So with that, I'm a firm believer in disclosure. I think we need to revisit this, perhaps. You have an immediate suggestion, perhaps my colleagues might have other suggestions. I think we do need more, even mentioning the City Ethics website is a good thing, because all the information we just read is right on the website. And so, what would you propose? I don't know if we've actually taken the time to write these out and clock them out, but I did, and went, wow, that's, that's something we should discuss.
Yes, and absolutely. The Ethics Commission, in its discussions, was very cognizant of the fact that disclosure is important, but can't drown out the political message itself. So one way to, and I should also say that there are some state laws that affect this, not necessarily the robo calls, the telephone calls, if we look at that specifically. All the state requires there is that it's say, "paid for by" and "not authorized by a candidate." So that would be one possibility, is to eliminate the, the address and city information that is currently required for the telephone calls. It would be a substantive change if we took out, from our law currently, if we took out information about donors, contributors to the Independent Expenditure Committee. We could certainly look at that. We do have some time constraints that we're facing in terms of the 2013 election. I might recommend moving forward with Ordinance A. At this point, perhaps taking out the address and city information for the robo calls, and then reporting back about ways to address the, the amount of time involved in making this information available.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Just to be clear, this, that would be an amendment that we would have to come back with, that's not something that we could do here.
No, that's fine. We get that.
So if we could pull that out, how quickly could, I know you just mentioned time restraints. How quickly, when, when's the last day for us to act for 2013?
We're up against the clock right now, because if this ordinance doesn't pass today unanimously, and needs to come back at, for a second reading next week.
I see. So then the recommendation, folks, might be to take that, the change on just that element out for now, and come back? If we keep it in the way as proposed, again, we're at like 28 seconds, 29 seconds on the 30-second spot.
My suggestion would be to adopt the ordinance today, but ask us to come back with amendments so we could amend the ordinance, so it won't delay the matching funds pieces that are in this ordinance that are critical.
I just meant that one part of it.
Yes.
On the disclaimer part.
So we move, we move this today?
We move everything today.
And then they come back with us, with the cleaned-up language that deals with the disclosure piece?
That's right. We just pull that element out, and we can implement that part later? Okay. No, so.
We wouldn't actually pull it out, we'd leave it in.
Oh, I see, because it's significantly different. So you're suggesting that we just come back with it?
Yes.
And can we strike the address portion as recommended today, or not? Yes? Okay, then I would suggest, at least, that shortens it a little bit. And the address information, first, is, is that on the Ethics website?
Well, yes, it is.
Actually, I need to revise what I just said. That would be a universal change, it wouldn't just apply to phone calls?
Can we apply verbal communications? Could it, could it just apply to verbal communications?
No, it would require more changes to the ordinance.
More changes to the ordinance? So we couldn't make any changes on that today?
It would be difficult to do it unless it's a universal change for all independent expenditure communications.
So, so the two options before us on this element is either include it the way it's written because of the timeframe right now, and come back. Can we make it so it only applies to 2013 election period, and just add that, and then we come back right after the election to fix it? No?
It's really, I.
What other options do we have? I mean, I think we all agree.
In fact, Mr. Englander, you're running out of time. Let me see if I can bring this to a closure. How soon before you can come back to us, so that we can act? Let's say we pass everything today, even though you are aware of the two changes we want to make. How quickly can you come back?
With this kind of change, perhaps not Friday, but next week.
So why don't we?
We missed the deadlines, then.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, so that's not an option. So that's why I'm suggesting, since there's, it's significantly different, it sounds like what we ought to do, and you're suggesting we can't just remove just the address portion on the verbal communications. So what I would suggest, then, if that's what our City Attorney suggests, is we, we sort of, we're, we're already gone down the road too far. We go ahead and approve it for now, as, as written, all, knowing full well it's going to take almost 30 seconds just to have a disclaimer for the 2013, and then come back and rework on that piece, because I think we all agree, it doesn't really, it doesn't work in practicality. It's the, but we still want to meet the goals and objectives of what you're trying to do, and I agree with that. And so, I think we just go ahead with A and C, and, and A as amended, amended, as, seconded by the Council President. We approve this as written and ask them just immediately to come back with something else. It's just going to take effect for 2013, there's just, I'm not sure what else we could do. Unless anybody else has suggestions, thank you.
Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with the concerns that have already been raised, and I have one other one that I think we should give a little thought to, which on its face makes sense, which is the increase in signatures to 1,000, and then getting benefits in terms of your matching funds. I'm wondering what we're, we're getting at there. One presumes you're seeking to get more grassroots participation, but it isn't necessarily a sign of grassroots participation, since a well-funded candidate can just pay for circulators, just now make that more of a focus of their campaign, and what have you proven? In fact, there are also candidates that get that many signatures without having either money or grassroots support. My good friend Nancy Pearlman, when she first ran for Community College Board and had no money and no circulators, gathered that many signatures on her own, just by spending all her time for three weeks gathering signatures. So are we trying to show that you can have a candidate that's energetic enough to gather all their signatures themselves, or well-funded enough to pay for 1,000 valid signatures, or have grassroots support? I don't know that it necessarily gets at exactly what we're thinking of, but it does cause a lot of extra work on the part of city employees and extra cost, and have some negatives. So I think we should get that piece a little more thought through before we move forward, because I think the goal is more grassroots activity, but it may not necessarily have anything to do with that, just wind up being an extra hoop and a lot of extra work for a candidate.
Okay, Mr. Alakon.
First of all, I think whatever direction we go in is better than what we've got. So congratulations as we move forward. With regard to the signature gathering, I've always been one who believed in the signature gathering process as a way to inform people who you are, that you're running. You're not really asking for support, you're just saying, hey, will you sign my document so that I can be placed on the ballot? And so even people who oppose you will sometimes sign your, your designation. Or usually, it's people who are undecided. And in every competitive race I've been in, I've always got the signatures. Whatever the highest margin was, I would, I would get them. So, but I'm concerned, I'm concerned that there may be a legal problem with us having a benefit to getting those signatures, as opposed to just a mere qualifying purpose. So have we done a legal analysis on this? Is there any precedent to giving bonuses for people that get signatures merely to place their name on the ballot?
Councilmember, we, we, after the council adopted this amendment, we did full legal research as to whether this provision would be lawful. We believe that it would be lawful as we, as we crafted it in the ordinance with the additional signature requirement. So it does not prevent those who choose to pay, collect 500 signatures and pay a filing fee to still be able to find a way to qualify for the accelerated funds. There's a provision in our charter that limits the number of signatures, and that's the, that's the reason why we created this alternate signature requirement.
Okay, whether or not it's legal, I question the, the, the purpose. They, it seems to me that, that there are two ways to win a campaign. One is to, a grassroots mobilization to get votes, and another is through massive amounts of money. If you're busy getting signatures to qualify for the ballot, it takes away from the time that you need to raise money. And if you're raising money, you don't have time to get the signatures unless you are paying for people to go out and get the signatures for you. I don't understand the purpose of having a, a criteria that increases the amount you get if you meet a certain threshold of signature gathering, particularly since the signatures don't mean they support you. That, that concerns me. So I, I'm, I'm, I have questions about that. But I would like to introduce a motion that was introduced by Mr. Weisar in committee, because I do believe the four-to-one match is, is going to have more significant impact in the primary than in the general election. In fact, I don't even understand why we're, why we're doing it in that order. Two-to-one match in the primary, four-to-one match in the general. By that time, you probably don't need the money. When there's only two candidates, you don't need the money. It's the, it's the first-time comers that are running in the primary that really need the money. So the friendly amendment is, well, I don't know if it's friendly, but I'm introducing it anyway. And that is that, that we move forward with a four-to-one match in the 2015, recognizing that, in the 2015 election, recognizing that we don't have enough money in 2013, but the report demonstrates that we would have enough money to cover a four-to-one match in 2015. And so that would be my motion, and Mr. Weisar is not here, otherwise I believe he would introduce it, but I would ask for a second. Thank you.
Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, just for clarification, Mr. Alakon, are you asking for then a report back as to making it a four-to-one match for primary and general without a signature requirement in the 2015 election, as a report back? Well, we, I mean, we're not going to be changing the ordinance here on the floor, I assume. So if you're asking for a report back, I will second that, especially because we don't know what the impact on the trust fund will be unless we have the, the report back.
I'd accept it.
I'll, I'll happily second that. I just want, a couple of comments on the independent expenditure disclosure that Mr. Englander had talked about, and then I have a few reports back that I want to suggest as well. You know, when we tried to address in Sacramento at the state level this issue of inadequate disclosure by independent expenditures, we, we had to deal with that same issue of how do you deal with radio, how do you deal with television? When you have these disclosures, it takes a long time. And, and that is a, that is a pragmatic problem that some political consultants who work for independent expenditure campaigns are going to have to figure out. I don't care. If it causes them to run fewer ads by independent expenditure campaigns because they need to buy a minute instead of 30 seconds, so be it. The problem that we have right now, the, the practical problem that we have from independent expenditures, is that they intentionally conceal who they are. If it's an independent expenditure campaign by an individual, or by a union, or by a corporation directly, fine, then those disclosures won't take so long. When it becomes a problem is when it's the independent expenditure campaign of the Committee for Puppy Dogs and Apple Pie, and we don't know who that is. That's when it takes a while, that we have to get all that information about who their major sponsors are, who their donors are, what their industries are, and so forth. We do this for initiatives. We should be doing it for independent expenditure campaigns as well. I agree that address, that's probably, you know, those sorts of things are probably excessive, so I think we should come back and try to fix that. But, but I would not be inclined to be supportive of, of significant reduction in that. Let the political consultants figure out how they're going to spend their massive, massive amounts of money that they get in the millions of dollars in these independent expenditure campaigns, massive amounts of money concealed by essentially false identities. Let them figure that out. I'm not concerned about the problem that they're going to have in that. But, but what I would like to suggest is that, because we are moving forward with it, it sounds like, with this ordinance today, I'd like, following the 2013 election, to ensure that we have reports back, after-action reports, if you will, to determine the effectiveness of these changes that we're implementing now, and the utility of these changes that we're, that we're implementing. The impact that those changes actually will have on the trust fund projections for 2015. The impact that those changes will have on the budget and personnel requirements of the Ethics Commission and the City Clerk's Office for 2015. And as Mr. Alakon already described, a report back on the impact of, on the trust fund of a change to a four-to-one match for both the primary and general in 2015 without a signature requirement. And then finally, a report back on the trust fund impacts of permanently increasing the maximum amount of, of matching funds from 125,000 to 150,000 in the general election. So I'd like those to be included as parts of the reports back as well.
We would be happy to do that. And can I ask a clarifying question regarding the permanent increase in the maximum available in general elections? Were you thinking of that in terms of only being provided to council candidates or to citywide candidates as well?
I think it should be broadly applied, so.
Okay, we will do that.
But, but we, we want to know the impact that it would have on the trust funds.
Yes, great.
Okay.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Kocorian. And I know, I think the, but I would support, and I always have supported, having larger funds to pull from, that's the appropriate place to do that, is in the budget process, though, so as you, as you pursue that, certainly you can count on, on my support. And I know a lot of people have always said, well, how can we afford to do this? This is giving public money away for campaigns. It's the only way we can actually, I think, counter the influence of, of special interest money. And so, as you move forward with that, please let me know what I can do. I, I support this, both the A and C. I just have a simple question for candidate-controlled committees. What sort of disclaimer do we need to have on right now, and how long would that be, approximately?
That would be less. It would be the same as for independent expenditure communication disclaimers, except for the contributor information. So it would be paid for by, the name of the committee or the candidate, and currently an address and city. And it would also require reference to additional information on the Ethics Commission's website.
And so we would be potentially looking at the address piece later, being taken off of that?
Yes.
Okay. So it would be something like hypothetically?
Oh, no.
What, or no, it would not, not for the cycle?
Not unless you ask us to.
Unless you ask, somebody has to ask for that? Okay. Sorry, we're going to chime in as well?
Were you going to say something?
A clarifying question, councilmember. Were you referencing any communication, or specifically radio and TV?
Sorry, the verbal, the verbal ones, the radio.
Okay.
I mean, for, for phone, phone, you know, they're going to hang up when they're going to hang up anyway, you know? You can even say, I assume under freedom of speech, you can hang up now if you'd like to, as I say this mandatory disclaimer, and then say the disclaimer. But, so I mean, it's still a long time. Let's say hypothetically, Dennis, you know, Dennis Zine for Controller, he's not talking about his own campaign, so I'm going to use him as a hypothetical. You know, this is paid, this ad was paid for by Dennis Zine for Controller, you know, blank, 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 whatever street. More information at LA City Ethics website. So it's probably like a 10, 10 seconds of a 30-second spot or something like that. Still not a, a short amount of time, it's just something to consider. I think with technology, it's really easy to send people to where they can find all the information, so I would encourage us to say, you know, paid for by blank, go to, and it can, I mean, I'd much rather say ethics.lacity.org/denniszine. Maybe you have a page on each person or whatever, than having to do all the address, all the other things. You know, technology allows you to do it quite short, or for, you know, from here on out, people are going to start naming their committees differently, you know, DZ for C, One Main Street, whatever it is. And I think that, that it's important for us to be able to make sure that we do have a link for people to have accountability, but that the message is the main thing that we're able to get out as well.
Okay, and members, we are going to lose a quorum, so make it quick, Mr. Englander.
I'll make it quick, and just say that, Mr. Kocorian, I, I agree. And it wasn't really just about.
And it wasn't really just about the independent expenditures, and I absolutely agree. I think there may be some legalities we've got to look at if we're going to—if we wanted to try to get rid of them completely and just abolish them, that would be—I agree with that, too, and you got my second. I don't know if we could do that either. But the issue also is one that Mr. Garcetti just brought up, and that is that the individual candidates will also have "paid for by" plus the committee name, plus the address. And I believe the words "additional information is available" at ethics.lacity.org. It's not just saying the web address. And so if you actually—and you have friends to elect from the San Fernando Valley—council member Dennis P. Zine for Controller is the name of the committee, plus the address, plus hypothetically, of course—not that we all support that councilman Dennis P. Zine for Controller. And then you have the entire committee address, as well as that information provided for. And then there's state law requirements as well, where the caller ID number can no longer be blocked, where the number is either the caller ID, I believe, that has to be on the phone, and/or then you have to say the phone number. So there's a lot of other requirements that we're going to have, and that's why the issue I bring up, it's at least half the call for a candidate call. And that's—and I wanted to stress that. So whatever we decided to do with that.
Okay. Now, what's before us, Mr. Clerk? There are no more speakers in the queue. I would like to wrap this up.
Mr. President, we do have item 12, and it has been recommended to support ordinance 1A, and—as well as recommendation number 2. We do have a technical correction that is before us, addressing a change to Section 49.7.31B that should read 49.7.31A2, as well as—or I might seek clarification if Mr. Englander's strikeout would—it should still be before counsel for consideration.
We can interliniate that provision and bring a clean copy back to the clerk.
So that would include that as well, along with Councilmember Kukorian's report backs.
Okay. So we're voting on 1A?
1A and recommendation—excuse me, and recommendation number 2, as amended.
Now, it's my underst—what about—wait, Mr. Englander.
For point of clarification, if I could, because I'm getting some nods. On the address portion that was proposed, is that something we can do, but it's not before us right now?
If you instruct us to come—if you instruct our office to come back with language in a subsequent ordinance, we can do that.
Okay.
That's not before you right now.
Right. Then I'll go ahead and make that additional friendly amendment to instruct them to come back with additional proposed language, as stated.
Second.
Okay. So let's there—no more speakers in the queue. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right.
And, Councilmember, that will go over one week for a second read.
All right. Okay, that brings us to item—is it item 1?
Yes, sir, item 1, called Special for Cards.
Ray? I think it's Golary. Ray? Do we have Ray here on item 1?
No Ray.
Okay, no Ray. No speakers in the queue on item 1. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to item 2. We have item 2B, 2C, and 2F still before council.
Anna Rivas and Arminik Norjanian. Please go forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Anna Rivas. I've been with the company since 1990. 2005, I had the opportunity to purchase the company, and I've been paying my taxes every year on time. A few years ago, they came and out of the company, and I had no problem because I always pay my taxes on time. But the lady said that you guys had me under a wrong class, which now I owe $15,000. And I'm asking that it was not my fault that you guys—well, the city had me under a different class for—well, had the company for almost 20 years under a different class. And so that's why I'm asking right now to see if there's something that I can work out as far as the $15,000 that is supposedly I owe, which I don't think is fair because I always pay my taxes on time.
Do we have anybody from the city here? Do we have anyone from the city? What I would like to do is to continue this and have her work with you. Can we do that? Okay, so ma'am, this is what we'll do. We'll continue this for a week. And just give us the address of the business.
Okay.
What is it?
It's right there, 3407—
3407 West Sixth Street.
That's the new location, yes.
Okay. So what we'll do is—you see the people over to my left.
Uh-huh.
I'm going to continue this for one week in the hopes that you can work something out with the two of them.
With them, okay.
Yes, okay. Arminik Norjanian?
Respectable City Councilmembers, DFL Angelinos. Actually, I fully endorse that item 2, and that's City Councilmembers, to vote for this item, because this item helps, you know, collect taxes from those unscrupulous landlords, you know, that don't pay taxes on time. And when they say that they don't owe unpaid taxes, this is outrageous. And I believe that—I would recommend the same for council action, approve a full rise of the financial record of what's linked for unpaid taxes, because that way it will help collect taxes and avoid fiscal insolvency, which so much threatens the city as the budget deficit of the city of Los Angeles, which outrages a number of $20 million, $20 million and more. And Angelinos can find themselves in the situation of a city of Scranton, where actually we reach fiscal insolvency, and police have to reciprocate the amount of federal—
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. Have we determined, Mr. Clerk, which item that is, so that we can move forward on the other two?
We have not yet, sir. We're waiting to hear from staff.
Do we—have we identified what this—is? Okay, then I'll go to—we'll hold this. I'll go to general public comment. It shouldn't take that long to find out which business we're talking about. Okay, now we'll go to public comment, general public comment, Arminik Norjanian, Michael Carione, William Rodriguez Morrison.
Yeah. DFL Angelinos, respectable City Councilmembers. My name is Arminik Norjanian. I'm a liberal Democrat and a human rights advocate, also blogger at youtube.com, progressive blogger, liberal blogger. And actually, I intend to run for the city of Los Angeles City Council this November, as I have, you know, progressive ways, you know, to implement liberal governance for the city of Los Angeles, to improve plight of many working-class Angelinos, and improve also opportunities for Los Angeles business affairs. As I promised also, that the city of Los Angeles will create many jobs, you know, for workers by means of distributing wealth from wealthy, let's say, homeowners and oil-producing manufacturers towards poor workers, you know, and poor businesses that expect so much to receive with—excuse me, state OE—no, city contracts. City contracts from the city of Los Angeles will be able to build so much housing, or build so much roads, you know, fix roads, you know, with money that's been taken from those wealthy oil-producing manufacturers. At least 49% of Angelinos support actually raising taxes against oil-producing manufacturers. It's been proved by a failed proposition all. And at least a good half of Angelinos will vote for raising taxes against wealthy corporations and rich individuals, most likely. And also believe that the city of Los Angeles should also introduce comprehensive ban against so-called medical marijuana dispensaries, as well dispensaries are prohibited to make any profit under state laws, under federal laws, marijuana quite illegal altogether. But if we want to, you know, allow people having marijuana—
Thank you, thank you. Michael Carione, followed by William Rodriguez Morrison, Carlos Mataquinn, Derma Rodriguez, or Deema Rodriguez. Michael?
Thank you. A while back, you guys voted on banning plastic bags. Yet, Mr. Labons gets his lunch brought in in a plastic bag. Thought you would have the decency to send your staff out in a recyclable bag. If you're going to ban them, be a part of the solution, not a part of the problem. I'm here to talk about my councilman, Mr. Weezer. He's got a gentleman named Julio Esperanza, who I guess was new at one time. We've given him enough time to try to get settled in. The man doesn't know what he's doing. He can't get a yard cleaned. He can't contact the right people. Mr. Weezer asked him to contact a public agency and ask them a simple question. How do you get from Huntington Drive to Soto Street? That was six weeks ago. Julio Esperanza contacted the wrong people, and they don't know how to cross the street from Huntington Drive to Soto. Nobody's been able to answer that answer, answer that question. You know why? There is no way to legally cross the street from Huntington Drive to Soto. There is none. So what do they do? Instead of answering the question, say there is no legal way of getting there, they ignore it. I just want the public out there to know, my councilmember showed up for the dog and pony show and then walked out. They show up to say that he was here while he's outside, and important votes are going on in here. You don't have a quorum while he's outside. It's unacceptable. I'm wearing my No Weezer hat from now on. Why? Because I don't think he's doing his job. And until he gets off that seat and comes over and starts doing the work that we elected him to do—
Thank you, thank you.
—I will continue to wear it.
Thank you, okay. Do we have Carlos here and Ms. Rodriguez? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Carlos Mataquinn. I'm with Occupy L.A. Today, I've come here with Derma Rodriguez, one of the success stories of Occupy L.A. Derma Rodriguez was foreclosed and evicted from her home in March. She was thrown to the street, her daughter, Ingrid Rodriguez, she suffered some severe cerebral palsy. I come to let you know that there was a clear victory for Derma Rodriguez and her family. She now is the legal owner of her home, thanks to the Occupy movement. And I will also thank you, Mr. President, because you referred Derma Rodriguez to public counsel. Public counsel helped with the negotiations with Bank of America, and it is, again, one clear victory where Occupy movement and the city of L.A., the city officials, can work together and bring good results for homeowners that continue to suffer. Thank you very much.
Now, thank you, sir. Ms. Rodriguez? I think I remember when you were here.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Derma Rodriguez. Vengo acá a darles muchas gracias.
Good afternoon. I am Derma Rodriguez, and I come to thank you.
Por gracias a Dios que el Occupy L.A. me ayudó a entrar a la casa, que me la vendió al banco.
Yeah, thanks to God. Occupy L.A. helped me to get my home back, my home back that was sold by the bank.
Y el grupo Occupy L.A. me trajo acá para pedir ayuda y estoy muy agradecida.
Occupy L.A. brought me here to ask for your help, and I am very thankful.
Para que me pudieran ayudar y gracias al concejal que me dio la ayuda.
For you to help me and thank—you to the council member for providing that help.
Y pude agarrar un abogado público y ya gracias a Dios el 20 de agosto.
I was able to get a public attorney, and thanks to God, on August 20th—
El Banco América volvió a comprar la casa y me la regresó.
Banco América bought back my house and gave it back to me.
Y estoy esperando que los pagos primero Dios que por esto me lo pagó y regresé.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for the payments, and thanks to God that they will give them to me back soon.
Por esto vine a darles las gracias, estoy muy agradecida.
I came to thank you. I'm very grateful.
Sí, por haberme ayudado y gracias a Dios estoy en mi casa con mi niñez.
For helping me, and thanks to God, I am back at my home with my special child and with my family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, thank you for taking the time to come back and to thank us for that. I do remember when you were here, and I do remember your daughter. Okay, with that said, Mr. Labons, is your button pushed in error? Okay, I figured as much. Okay, now we're going to go back to item 2. Mr. Clerk, I think we can move item 2, except for 2C, is it?
Mr. President, would you like to continue item 2C to September 19?
Yes.
We'll do that without objection then, sir. In regards to item number 2, that leaves 2B and 2F. Again, 2B and 2F to be voted on.
No one's on the queue. Madam Clerk was prepared to vote on those items. Would you open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
Okay, announcements? Or no, I'm sorry, Mr. Clerk, I got ahead of myself.
Counsel has—excuse me. Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Okay, announcements? Okay, if everybody in council could please rise for adjourning motions, everybody in council, please rise. Mr. Garcetti? Mr. Labons, did you? Mr. Labons?
Members, I ask for adjourning memory of Roger Dunn. Grew up in Pasadena, was a champion golfer, champion golfer at USC. Started the Roger Dunn Golf Shops, which were famously used by many. He lived to be 81 years old. A memorial service is set for September 30th at the Weddington Golf and Tennis Facility in Studio City in his memory. Much-loved person. And as the news broke over the night, Ambassador Chris Stevens and three others in the embassy overseas in Libya wanted to be remembered that. And it's stated today in many of the news broadcasts, we always do remember those in the armed forces, but those in the State Department who served post unarmed to help the cause of the American information and the system of our country, we want to remember all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Councilmember Labons to join me in adjourning in memory of someone I just found out had died last month, Grace Friedman, a beloved person of books who passed away in August of cancer. She was born in Detroit, in Detroit in 1916, lived in Los Angeles since 1934, and was a proud graduate of ECLA in 1939. She received her master's in library science from Immaculate Heart College and spent her entire life involved with books, perhaps most memorably when the major fire occurred at the downtown Central Library. With volunteers urgently needed to assist in many ways, including saving books, Grace was among the first to volunteer, serving in various roles, and stayed until the end of the process that culminated with returning the library to service. For over 30 years, she was the librarian of the Adat Ariel Religious School Library. She was president of Friends of the Fairfax Library for three decades and ran the book sale every week. She also volunteered at service to shut-ins, bringing books to the elderly. She was an election day volunteer, running a precinct for more than 25 years. A longtime resident of Park La Brea, she is survived by her husband, Abraham Friedman. She survived her husband, Abraham Friedman, and is survived by her children, Elizabeth Freeman of Palmer, Arkansas, and my friend Jonathan Friedman of Los Angeles, her nieces and nephews, Richard and Doreen Friedman, Ellen and Mike Turnbow, and Judy and Mike Sennett, and other family members. Contributions in her memory may be made to Friends of the Fairfax Library and Sent Care of Friedman, 1702 South Robertson Boulevard, Suite 400. of Friedman, 1702 South Robertson Boulevard, Suite 400, L.A. 90035.
Mr. Corretts, if I could get on that, too. I know Jonathan very well. Okay, Mr. Englander?
Yeah, thank you. Earlier today, we recognized the victims and the families from September 12th, 2008, from the Chatsworth Rean accident. And I just ask that we adjourn in their memory as well today.
Very appropriate. Thank you. Any other, Mr. Garcetti?
Announcement after, sorry.
Okay. Well, I think if you need to do an announcement, there are no other adjourning motions, you need to do it before I adjourn this meeting, so make your announcement.
I just wanted to wish Joe Buscaino a very happy birthday. And we don't have to inflict a song on you today.
No, but you know what happened? It is a happy birthday, but your staff was supposed to come down early and sing, but for whatever, but for whatever reason, they lacked the courage, okay? So, anyway, so that's a challenge. So, next year, I expect your full staff to be here, singing in tune, acapella. Happy birthday to Joe Buscaino, who is 28 and holding. All right. With that said, members, we are adjourned.